And is everybody with us in the plan? Is everybody with us on the planning? I can't see anybody.
Yeah, the full planning board is here tonight.
So Bill and Fred, I'll open our meeting first. Why you guys wait for Pete?
I just let, I just let Mr. Colin Bodis in, so.
Alright, so, so I'll open the planning board meeting, so. Be in Wednesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty PM and have a quorum. I'll open the, um, the planning board meeting, call to order, and, um, I'll read a quick, um. Some quick guidelines for this evening. Um, the town manager has imposed a strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. Um, this meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted through remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No interest in attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded, and within forty-eight hours, we'll post it on the town's website and social media pages. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. I'm Patrick Driscoll, the Chair. Mr. Raymond Agemian, Mrs. Jean Garino, the Clerk, Mr. Mike, Michael McDonald, the Vice Chair, Mr. Stephen Geller. And then two associate members, uh, Ms. Asfard Rojas and Mrs. Julie, Julia Santacangelo. Uh, during this meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as roll call votes. The, the following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely with us this evening. Mrs. Jennifer DeBobrian, the Community Economic Development Director, Mr. Michael Dutton, the Town Manager. Mr. Greg Tansey, the Town Engineer, will be joining us, uh, later on this evening. Um, and I think that's it, the town staff, correct? Mr. Mr. DeBobrian?
That's correct, and this, this is on now.
Mr. Who, Tansey?
Mr. Tansey is on now.
So at this time, everybody's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted throughout the whole meeting. And I appear on the agenda, the project representatives' mics will be unmuted. If this is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask to use the chat feature to ask a question by listening, by listing your name and address and your question. Um, the host, who is Mrs. DeBobrian, will recognize the questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu, and you'll be unmuted when the, when the host recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. So I opened our meeting. I don't know if Mr. Colin Bodis wants to open the, uh, CED meeting. The, the first item we have is a public hearing, uh, continuation with the CEDC of the town council. But zoning recodification with Attorney Mike Bobrowski.
Okay, yeah, I'll open the public hearing on behalf of the Community Economic Development Committee. I'm Peter Colin Bodis, Chair. With me, I'm not sure if Bill Wood is on, member, and Fred Chase, member.
They're both on.
Okay.
Um, so, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I guess, um, I would, um, just like to, um, first start off. Didn't say, Mr. Dutton, Town Manager, I think has a few words he'd like to say first, and then we can turn it over to Attorney Bobrowski, um, if that is the board's and committee's pleasure.
Sure.
All right, well, uh, certainly, thank you, everybody, uh, for, um, serving. This is a very long time. Um, a long, long, uh, process that we've gone through to get to this point, but I think we're, we're almost, uh, to the point where uh, we can address some potential changes in, in the, uh, legislation, and then, uh, I think probably what will happen, uh, is that we will, uh, resubmit the, uh, updated zoning that the both boards can sort of, uh, agree to back to the council. Um, but I'll defer to the board chairs on exactly the mechanics of how you want to do that. Um, this is obviously a problem. Um, and I say a problem, it's been an issue that we've been living with for years. Um, and that is a zoning bylaw that's, uh, very often confusing, in some cases contradictory, and, and generally jumbled. We are, uh, as I said, hopeful that we're near the end of the process. Um, we would like, we've got a little bit of money coming from the Department of Revenue, uh, as part of a grant that, uh, that we can, uh, submit uh, to, uh, get once this process is done and once the, uh, revised ordinance is, is voted. Um, just for the members of the public who, who, uh, either have, uh, lost interest over the, uh, years or um, don't know, uh, this began as an effort to do what I just mentioned, just try to correct some some errors in the, uh, zoning bylaw, uh, correct contradictory provisions in the zoning bylaw, and just create a better template uh, for moving forward. So as part of that, we appointed a, uh, an ad hoc committee to, uh, work with Attorney Bobrowski, uh, Pat Driscoll, Chair of Planning Board is here tonight. Uh, Pete Collin Bodus, uh, Chair of Community and Economic Development Committee here tonight. Uh, Steve Solari, the Building Inspector, Zoo Etneiro, the, uh, who at the time was Town Engineer, and Jennifer DeBobrian, who, uh, obviously, you know, pretty well. Um, and so, uh, that committee came up with a, a first draft for Mark, and I think there have been a number of iterations since then, but I'll just sort of, uh, highlight the importance of, of getting to the point where we can actually adopt a comprehensive update. Uh, and that dates back, the beginning of that effort dates back really to the Dukakis Report, uh, which we had commissioned with BSU, uh, BSU's help. Um, and the report showed that, that really incorrect or confusing or hard to read zoning puts, puts a real damper on, on good development, whether it's good community of, uh, community development, economic development. And, um, and our existing, um, bylaw was just that. It was, it was hard to read and hard to, hard to navigate, so. Um, and worst case scenario, it can actually, uh, perpetuate bad development, so we certainly uh, saw some of that, and we have seen some of that, so we want to correct some of that, so. I, I, I recognize the temptation to make, you know, very significant policy changes, um, through this, this document. Um, and I definitely, you know, encourage everybody to really dig into those significant policy changes, but um, but I, I would hope that you can get at least this recodification process done, uh, and at a point where it can be easily voted um, by the council, and that, uh, that would probably mean treating some, not all, but some of those big policy changes later on. Um, and, and be able to pick off those once you've got, once you've got sort of the recodification set in place, but that's those are my two cents, obviously, um, you know, you, you can do as you choose. Um, but I just thought I'd sort of lay out a little bit of, uh, brief history and, and, uh, thank you for tackling what really is an enormously important, uh, job. So that's, that's all I got. Um, so thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Attorney Bobrowski, and thanks, uh, board members.
So, uh, Mr. Driscoll, Mr. Colin Bodis, would you like Attorney Bobrowski to do a presentation? How would you like to proceed at this time? Uh, Mr. Colin Bodis, you're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, I think what would be useful would be kind of a, um, a summary of the work of the committee so far and where we're at now and what, what juncture, what decision points we're, what's on the table for next steps.
So, so Pete, do we want to, uh, at our last meeting, we continued this public hearing?
Yes.
With the intent that we'd have a workshop in between the two public hearings? And we didn't have that workshop? So, I guess the question is, is do we want to continue this or cancel this public hearing and, and change this into an informal workshop this evening, or do you want to continue the public hearing? Keep, it's, you know, keep going.
Either way.
Last time, last time we continued workshop that.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's a lot of value to the workshop process of a less formal proceeding, where you can kind of dig into issues a little more, a little more intensity, so maybe we could, yeah, I'm amenable to that. I mean, it doesn't preclude continuing the public hearing, though, does it?
No, you can still continue the public hearing.
So do we just want to operate under this as a public hearing right now and just continue?
Sure.
Yeah.
Is that the easiest way? Okay, so, so why don't we have, uh, Attorney Bobrowski give us the updates? The, the board can, the boards can engage with Attorney Bobrowski, and then we can open up for public comment?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Good evening. So I was prepared this evening to focus on the changes that were recommended by the committee after the last session of the public hearing. Um, I've talked about them on a off, off-camera call with, uh, Town Manager and Town Planner, and I had actually prepared uh, what is now draft fifteen. Well, Michael, you should recognize that first draft is just a distant memory. And we're now on draft fifteen, so that highlights the significant, well, they're not, some of them are not significant, others are significant. I don't disagree that with the, if the board were to determine that they wanted to go forward with the changes that I'm recommending, it, it probably does require a re-advertising. Um, so with that in mind, can somebody share their screen with me?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You can, you have control, huh?
You know, Mr. DeBobrian, the one person I didn't recognize, I don't know if he's on, uh, Mr. Solari joined us this evening?
Um, he has not joined us. I'm not sure if he's going to join us.
Okay, so just for those of you participating remotely in the public, I want to give you a, a brief overview. This is, as you can see, draft fifteen. And there was a period of time, maybe a year or two ago, where we really raced through ten drafts, eleven drafts. By the time you get to draft ten, many of the changes are just cosmetic. My office manager, who prepares the, the final version, oftentimes makes cosmetic corrections or format changes, and that becomes a new draft, to give you an example, so don't think that every one of these fifteen drafts has rein- reinvented the universe, because they haven't. Um, where we left it, um, a couple of weeks ago was that I would make track changes of the insignificant changes to the draft. And I'll, as we go through, call those out, and then items to be discussed in yellow. So I'm, um, I'm beginning from the proposition that, uh, many of you are familiar with the basic draft, and that I am going to, perhaps, but the best thing for me to do would be to just give a, a paragraph or two about each section as I walk through. So the first section of the bylaw, or ordinance rather, is the introductory material. Uh, this outlines authority, scope, applicability, amendments, and severability. This is really pretty much just where the bylaw gets off the ground. There's nothing in here that's earth-shattering. The authority is pretty, uh, dependable. That is zoning act, chapter forty-eight, and the Home Rule Amendment to the Constitution, which is Article eighty-nine. And the rest of this is pretty much just a handshake. Section two has a minor track change in it. Um, somebody caught the fact that the residential RB, RA and RB are not two different districts. In fact, it's one district called Residential AB, so with your forbearance, I will accept that change. And otherwise, um, that's the nature of the changes to the district regulations, but we did not, for the most part, add a district or change a district boundary. Uh, we did a little bit of tweaking in terms of, uh, language of the overlay districts, but for the most part, um, we, we did not add or subtract. And we added some language. Here's another addition that was missed in reference. For the most part, um, this is what, what you had is what you've got. Some minor changes with regarding, with regard to, um, what to call the building inspector. Is he the commissioner or the inspector? So there's another track change, and I, I probably will see that throughout. Um, in Article Three, Use Regulations, uh, we modified the existing table of uses. And, uh, it's now an appendix to the bylaw, to the ordinance, in a separate document. I'll, I'll call that up later. Uh, there's a couple of cosmetic changes that were made, um, in the use table, but there's nothing substantial from your last version.
Do you mind interruptions? Because, um, I do want to bring up a point there, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
Bill Wood from the council. So I, I brought this, I issued it before, and I see it still in the table of use. I don't see the ERO, which is the Elm Street Retail Overlay. Um, which is.
You, you don't see overlay districts in the table of uses, because it's, it's impossible to chart the underlying districts, which have their own set of regulations, and then put the overlay in it. It, you, one would say yes, and one would say no, and you'd get totally confused.
So I, I think you need to understand why, though. That was there, and we did add it to the table years ago. And that, that delineates where, uh, medical marijuana treatment, uh, the MRDs can be located.
Well, one would get that information by actually reading the text of it now, rather than looking at the use table. I could put in the use table, medical marijuana RMDs, C-section eleven or, or nine-point-six or something like that, but it wouldn't have uh, the underlying districts all say no, because that's the only place you allow it. So that's, that's the way it's, it's, nobody, nobody handles it differently. When you look at a use table, it's underlying districts, and it's not overlay districts.
That's fine. It was just the recommendation of the staff years ago, so.
Yeah. Like, I have that, I'm, I'm dealing with that issue in another town now, and what I'm doing is just adding it to the use table, but, but instead of putting entries in the columns, just putting C-section so and so, so I'm happy to do that. I don't think anybody would be confused by that.
So, so Mark, that's, I have, I have, Bill, I have the existing use table in front of me?
Yep.
So the ERO is not in the existing use table?
Are we talking about the one I prepared or the one that you had in the old ordinance?
Well, I think Mr. Wood's point was that it's not in the new table. Is that correct, Mr. Wood?
That's correct. It was in the old table.
Yeah, and my point is that it should not be in the new table.
So I have the, I have the old, I have the, the current table in front of me. We have A, B, C, D, CBD, SPD, Business B, Gateway, East Gateway, IA, IB, IE, PD, and MEHC. So we don't have, the, the ERO is not in the use table currently. Is that correct, Mrs. DeBobrian?
It actually, I'm sorry, it actually is, if you look, um, um, I think it's the fifth or sixth page, um, I think it's the sixth page of the use table. It's like down at the very bottom, it's only on one line, all by itself, right above registered medical, registered marijuana dispensaries, so it doesn't apply to any other district. It's just on that one column, so it is, it is sort of in there, but.
So to Mr. Wood's point, why can't, why can't we just keep that as is? Is that a bad practice, Attorney Bobrowski?
You don't normally see, uh, it, we don't ever see in the use table overlay districts.
I know we have the Waterford Village Overlay District in that use table as well, in, I think in similar fashion. Is that correct?
I believe so. I have to look, hold on.
Right, but to point back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, when we changed the use table, it was to limit the location of the RMD, that, that specific area within the industrial zone on Elm Street. If you can describe that in text, that's perfectly fine. If you, if we list medical marijuana dispensaries on a line in the use table, it needs to find a, a spot in that matrix where a yes can appear.
Well, we could just handle it the way we currently handle it and leave it at the bottom of the use table, correct?
Right, right.
So is that a, a change we want to make? Add that back in, or do we want, just so we can move on, or do we want to leave it the way Attorney Bobrowski has it?
Is, is it indicated in other text within the changes here?
It should be back in section, uh, ten.
I don't want it to rattle tonight, but on that, it's just, it's it, it becomes a significant, significant change if it's absent. If it's in text, that's fine. If it's in the use table, that's fine. Somebody looking forward to it. It's happening now.
I'm looking for the text, but, um, you guys can make a decision as to whether or not you, how you want it handled.
Well, let, let's move on for, we're, we're in a workshop format, so let's just move on. And we can come back to that later, which, just put it as we see in the parking, in the parking lot.
I'll keep looking while you guys talk.
Right, so, so in our existing, in our existing zoning, it's, it's item sixteen on page twenty-six. And just in that last column, that's the only place ERO is listed, and it says special permit. I don't say, I mean, that's an easy thing to correct. Why don't we just keep it the way it was, if we want to keep it clear?
Yeah, I don't, in the text, it's on seven point four in the new text on page thirty-six, and I don't see where it says the ERO, so we have to add that language.
But it's nice to, it's nice to have a new stable, too, if somebody wants to build a registered marijuana dispensary, they go right to the use table, boom, it's allowed in the ERO, instead of trying to figure out, you know, where it is in the text.
Okay.
I'd be in favor of adding it back in. I don't know if anybody else cares or not, but we can move on.
Yeah, the question is, is whether the usefulness outweighs the, the clutter it might cause in the use table of the confusion.
I mean, it's one line in the use tables.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's nice to know, it's a boom, it's not allowed anywhere else, but it's allowed in the ERO. I think that's it, it clearly defines where it's not allowed, and then where it's allowed, so. Do, do we want to take votes on this stuff, so we can move on? Just either accept this change, or wha- what do we want to do?
I don't see much harm in adding it, unless someone seriously objects.
Anyone?
Either way works.
I'd be a favor of that, yeah. Back in, keep, keeping it in there.
Bill and Fred, do you have strong opinions?
I, I think it belongs, if we're not, if we're not forcing a change, it belongs in the original, as the original, um, change was made five years ago, and so it belongs in the table. It's as much as, you know, I, I get what the attorney is saying, but I know the action that we did before, and unless there's a substitution that equals the action that we did before, I'm more comfortable with it in the table.
Yeah, and we want the document to be useful to people.
So we'll keep it in the table.
Yeah, with a reference to a line of text in the body, right?
Attorney Bobrowski, back to you.
Good morning. I'm gonna put this, put this back up, hang on. Okay, so back to section four. I think the first substantive matter that we addressed in our phone call was in section five. And I'll pick up all of these when I just accept all changes in the document. So this is the first policy, if you will, question. This section on, section on non-conforming uses, uh, requires, as do all of these sections, that you list the kinds of changes that are contemplated, and they have to be listed in order for you to be able to do them. So non-conforming uses, and this does not apply to houses or two-family houses, because this is, uh, there's another section that applies to those kinds of structures. Permissible changes, five-two-one, change or substantial extension of the use are the words of the statute. So it makes sense that you would allow for consideration a change or substantial extension of the use. The statute does not say that you can change one non-conforming use to another less detrimental non-conforming use. And case law has an example of that. And for years, I've discussed with towns whether or not you want to take advantage of this. If you don't put it in, you can't do it. So you can change a non-conforming use to a conforming use, or you can change it or substantially extend it. But, but you can't go to a completely different thing, which is also not allowed, even if that thing is better, not more detrimental. In the case at hand, which comes from Winchendon, the, um, applicant wanted to convert a non-conforming gravel pit, think big hole, into a non-conforming demolition landfill. Neither the gravel pit nor the landfill were allowed. But he argued it's better to have a filled hole than a hole. The neighbors protested, not knowing what was going to be in the landfill. They feared for environmental reasons, and they won, because the bylaw did not specify that you could change one non-conforming use to another less detrimental non-conforming use. The implication there is that if you put it in, you can consider it. So I'll give you an example. I rezoned the town of Norwood ten, fifteen years ago, and a client engaged me a couple of years ago to come back and revisit with my friends. And we used this provision to convert what was downtown, it was an eighteen eighty-five building. It had six apartments and six storage units. The storage units were non-conforming uses. And he wanted instead to raise the building, and he wanted to put in the building twelve market-rate flats for sale. Um, that was not allowed in the district. It was, uh, it was, that, that use was not allowed in his particular district either. So the question for the board was, what do you want to do here? What's more detrimental, the existing building with six apartments and six storage units? Or what he proposes, twelve homeownership apartment flats for sale? And by a four-to-one vote, the board granted the special permit here, uh, in order to do that. I, I happened to be in Norwood a couple of weeks ago, um, and I drove by to see if the construction had actually taken place, and in fact, it had. And I have to tell you, it was an amazing improvement on the neighborhood, which is right next to the hospital. So it's attractive housing next to a destination for people's jobs. But, but for the inclusion of that same language in the Norwood bylaw, they would not have been able to do that. I'm not saying every proposed change is less detrimental. I'm saying, open the door to listen. If you don't have this, you can't listen. And there was no way on God's green earth that eighteen eighty-five building was ever going to be remodeled, because it would have been prohibitively expensive to do so. It was much cheaper to just knock it down.
I think, can I just try and think? I think the wisdom of, of giving the permit grant, granting authority, this authority depends on the confidence that one has in those individual members. So if you have a great confidence in the membership, then you'll grant a lot of power to them. And the question is whether, whether we would agree that the decisions in particular cases are sensible or not. So that, that kind of colors my thinking on this.
You know, Mark, I looked, I, I was, I, I'm against this. I, I don't like it. I think it's dangerous. Like, you know, we're trying to get rid of use variances, and then this is kind of a backdoor way to a use variance. And then after our last workshop, I looked at Andover and Eastern that you recently did, and I see that. Andover, I don't know if they didn't accept it, they didn't discuss it, but they have. This blank, and then Eastern adopted it to a certain point, so. I mean, personally, I, this is something we don't need to have. This is a substantial policy change. I I I'd rather have rules and and. Have people know what the rules are and and not have, I think it's a tool, but I think it could be a dangerous tool, and I I don't, I don't like it. I'd like to see it removed. That's just me, though.
Well, I've said my piece, so I'll listen to the board discuss this, and of course, I'll abide by your decision. My recent thrust in rewriting bylaws has very much tilted towards creating a maximum degree of flexibility, because. If the state legislature is going to take, let me see, let me count now, forty-seven years to rewrite chapter forty-eight since the last major rewrite, I've given up hope.
Yeah, I I just think it's the thing that scares me even more, those is no use variance and no dimensional variance required either. And that's. It's not just the use, it's also we're just waving all dimensional and all. All other, you know, all of the variances are just basically waves as well, so I I don't. I see where Eastern did it, they they did change from one non-conforming use to the less detrimental non-conforming use, that's where it ended. But then you still have, then then the abuddies and people in town still have some protections, but they still have to qualify for a variance or. Dimensional aspects, but I I just. It's it's too, it's, for me, it's too flexible, because it just is too flexible. It's like we're setting all these, it's it's like we're setting all these rules, and then we're saying, well, you don't have to comply to any of them in certain instances, so.
If we could somehow apply parameters to that discretion that the the membership have, that would make me more comfortable. Of course, that. That would be quite, quite a task.
Well, the parameter is less detrimental, so quantifying that.
I mean, that's, that's a rather subjective, can be a subjective judgment, right?
That's what the statute calls upon you to do every time you're looking at a non-conformity.
Yeah.
I I I mean, I looked at the other good towns, you know, including Conked, where you live, Attorney Bobrovsky, I didn't see it in any of those. I just like Conked, Andover, Eastern only adopted part of it. I just, I I. I look at those good, those other, you know, towns with what I consider good zoning, and it's not in there, and I just, I'd like to see it removed. Any other board comment on it?
Yes, I'll I'll go a little against the uh, kind of the pack here. I actually think it is a powerful tool. It is also a dangerous one, as you said, but I think I would generally be in favor of keeping it with some changes. Perhaps making it more like Eastern, or perhaps a a two-stage approval process where after CBA would require a second approval, possibly from a county council or even the planning board. Just to kind of add a safeguard as to what Mr. Colibota said, where, you know. You hope everybody on a particular board is gonna do the job well, but, you know, it is a risk.
How about if we take, how about if we take this certain table at Mark until we do the other, you know, I know there's gonna be more, more policy changes later on, we can. I mean, would that be, accept all the people, remove it for now, and come back to it when the next, next time we address zoning or or amend it to remove the. Um, the second sentence.
I put the second sentence in, um, because. During the Norwood proceeding, even though I wrote the zoning there. Uh, got into an argument with a a professional debate with a gentleman who was a lawyer. About whether we also needed a variance, uh, because the apartments. Were subject to a formula. If I had a clean slate and I was building the apartment fresh, without a pre-existing building, I would have to follow the zoning. And the nature of the variance there would have been more units. It would have been twelve, which we wanted to build for economic reasons versus eight or nine, which the formula would have allowed. And I argued to the board that the formula didn't apply, because this was a non-conforming use, not a fresh piece of property. And therefore, as long as it was less detrimental, I could do whatever we wanted to do. And ultimately, I got four votes, and the gentleman was voted down. But because of the experience, I added that sentence.
Yeah, I just think, I just think it gives too much flexibility to the developer. I just, I'm totally uncomfortable. It's like one of the big sticking points of me on this whole rewrite. It just makes me very concerned.
Well, the the alternative is that you're looking at a building rotting to the ground built in eighteen eighty-five.
Well, they could, well, they could revert to a conforming use, which you'd want.
Or not.
So if I can add, um, so do we have any idea of what our stock of non-conforming use in the in our various districts are at this point?
God, I'm sure you're like everybody else, and there's plenty of them.
Yeah, I I I, you know, the reason we're sitting here is to change the zoning to make it a more, have more clarity. Give it better communication to people that want to work within the town. Um, so that they understand the zoning. I think this this paragraph kind of removes that, that control that the boards have. Um, with respect to the projects within a district that's already zoned for one particular type. And I I would rather see a change come from the council or the planning board or somebody else. Um, to to make that variance allowable as opposed to just, just allow it. So I I think the paragraph as it exists probably doesn't help Bridgewater.
Uh, I'm thinking of one building in Bridgewater right now. That doesn't fit into the neighborhood down off of Plymouth Street. Would this. Fall into that type of. Um, non-conforming approval use or something?
I think, I think it would depend on what the use says, correct, Mark? The use may, is the use allowed, James? Didn't you use not allowed?
Pardon me?
What what type of use is it, do you know?
It's the apartment building that's unbarrel out that doesn't fit into the neighborhood.
Right, that's a, that's a, that's a forty B, though, so I think that probably is, right?
But is this. Would that type of thing possibly be built? Using this paragraph?
Only if it's not more detrimental.
But that's up to somebody, that's up to somebody to determine, so.
Would depend what.
Mr. Chase has his hand up.
Well, thank you very much. I uh, I think very simply that if we're looking for clarity and consistency. I think no- nothing really is is more conducive to those results than black letter law. And I think that to Patrick's point, uh, a a rule's rule, and it certainly makes far easier. The job of the planning board, uh, when they can refer to that black letter law. And not get engaged in the process of, uh, special permit issuances. Uh, I have a particular case in mind that I'm not going to mention that I think about when I think about special permits. And, uh, the unfortunate and unforeseen consequences that they may give rise to. Um, but that's my comment.
So do we want to take a vote on this? Do we want a more comment? Do we want to see it removed? I mean. Is there anybody that wants it to stay?
I think the current version of it is far too broad, but I think, I think that there is some, I think there is some meat there. If it could just be, you know, trimmed at all to 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 be something that that makes it more restrictive, but still possible to do so. But it's not a big hang up for me either way. I wouldn't hold things up to keep it in there.
And I I'd like, I'd like, that's like my number one thing I want to see go on this. I think we're, we're trying to get rid of use variances in town, and we're adding this, and it's just, to me, it's, it's not a good thing.
I think that's fair, too, you know?
All right, the horse is dead. We'll stop beating it. I'll take it out.
Okay.
I'm looking for the next thing that's colored yellow. Maybe Jen can help me a little bit here. Is is it the plan? Is it the innovation districts, Jen?
Uh, I don't know if it's innovation or adult retirement. I don't know which one comes first.
Which one is it? It's senior or adult or?
Yeah, it's either senior housing or innovation. I don't know which one comes first.
I think senior would come first.
I think it was like sixty-two or something.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be here.
I I also offered last time about adding a table of contents. If if you're using Word and you have these as heading one and two.
There is a table of contents. And it's, it's, it's quite extensive. It goes fifteen pages long. Every subsection is an entry in the table of contents.
Oh, I recall the table of contents.
Well, my secretary reminds me of it every day, because she made it.
I could ask a question before I get to the innovation district. Um, Mark, I believe that either the last time we met or the time before I mentioned, uh. Here we go. Tree board or some sort of tree mitigation process, and I think you, you agree that it might not be a bad idea, but I don't see anything in here. I thought it might be in six.
I believe, I tried to add something into six. I might have just done it as a track change. Let me, I I do remember what you're talking about. Yes, there it is right there. As mitigation for tree removal, an applicant may make an appropriate payment in lieu if the SPGA or planning board concurs. T there.
How would you interpret that? I'm not sure I interpreted as anything. Has any strength to it.
Well, it adds the possibility that they would pay money into it. You could, you could easily establish a tree fund if you wanted to under your rules and regulations. Many towns for subdivision applicants, for example, don't make them build the sidewalk. They make them pay into a sidewalk fund, and then they build sidewalks in town where they're most needed, rather than where the developer wants to have a subdivision.
So so this language in no way compels the applicant.
That's right. That's my point.
Make that payment.
Well, no, um, I could make it mandatory if that's what you want me to do.
I think what we had discussed quite a while ago, setting up the board, is that we come up with some sort of formula. Um, in terms of tree removal. Therefore, in other words, if, uh, they they have to remove X number acres that, uh, based on the number of acres they move, that they. Will thus, uh, give mitigation to the town in a monetary form to plant more trees elsewhere.
Okay, what if they wanted to replant on the site? Could they, can they do that?
I think something like that would be left up to the permit granting authority.
All right, so I don't think we're on different pages here, right? I just, I'll just add some language there that makes that a little bit more clear that the board can insist. On on an appropriate payment in lieu.
Well, don't some towns spell out if a tree is a certain diameter, you gotta replace two to one, you take a one, you gotta replace it with two?
I rarely see that.
Yeah, I think language giving the special permit granting authority, authority to compel. A payment would be in order.
Yeah, I mean, when you get into two to one and all that stuff, a lot of what's coming down is garbage, and now you're getting. You know, two to one for it, so I don't. I I rarely see that. But you you know, don't let me discourage you from adopting. Regulations as well, so you have the authority with these very detailed performance standards to go into even more detail in your regulations. It doesn't all have to be in the ordinance. It can be in a second document.
A supporting document.
A supporting document, that, you know, think of it as filling in the gaps or filling in the details.
All right, we 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 could also add this, so in our, in our subdivision rules and regulations.
Of course.
And now we're adopting site standards in the zoning. We could, instead of saying one tree of two-inch caliber every forty feet, we could give the developer also the option to to pay into a tree fund if they don't. If they do like a cluster development, don't want to plant the trees, or they can plant them somewhere else on site, but like a pay into a tree fund. As we get to the side of sidewalks.
Yeah, I just, I'm just, I just, I'm going by what Pete just said. I mean, I I want to see some teeth in the line that they. It's not that they can decide whether they want to, uh, put money into the fund. I I would like to see something where they have to. Uh, based on the number of trees cut down. We've gone through this a couple of times, and both the developers have voluntarily. Given money, but I think, uh, it should be, uh, required in some way.
Okay, I'll I'll rework that language. I understand what you want.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of the middle of that, you know, where something where like Mr. Colibota said, we could compel them, but not something where it's strictly required. Anytime you cut down any tree on a property whatsoever, this is my thought on it.
Right, the next, um, policy discussion was to be on senior housing. So Patrick has fallen in love with the Andover bylaw, which I did not write. Um, I did litigate under it, and it was, um. You know, it it. It's very detailed, and it has formulas in it that I think are meaningless, so. Senior housing exists in a number of different contexts. Sometimes it's a campus. Though the case in Andover involved a hundred units of assisted living on a seven or eight acre site. Uh, by a Washington group called Capital Senior Housing. I've also litigated senior housing assisted living cases in which the. The structure was on a three-quarter acre lot. Very tight to other buildings, other houses. And the model was slightly different, whereas the campus, um, you know, was usually the housing was centered. It certainly was on Elm Street in Andover. Uh, and the 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 buffer to the neighboring properties as a result was quite deep, two, three hundred feet. Um, the one I litigated, on the other hand, in Tewksbury was. I think the drop-off area for the adults arriving for daycare at the facility was, you know, there was a, there was a six-foot stockade fence between the van and the door. Um, and that's where you offloaded adults coming in at nine o'clock in the morning and being picked up at five o'clock at night. And both are very effective for senior care. So I'm not in love with a formula here in terms of so much lot space for so many rooms. The average resident of an assisted living facility, according to the general accounting office years ago, is an eighty-two-year-old woman. With deficiencies in at least two activities of daily life. Daily life activities include dressing, bathing, feeding yourself, taking medicine. Two of those, and you're disabled under federal law. So my mom's ninety-three, she lives in one of these facilities. We took her car away about ten years ago. It's not a generator of traffic in, to the extent that the people who live there are. Uh, getting in their cars and hopping out into traffic jams. They they may be bused or shuttled. Uh, but, you know, creating traffic is, other than staff, traffic is is generally not a major issue. So for those reasons, I I tend to focus on the positive aspects of senior housing, which which have primarily to do with the residential character. I'm a baby boomer, and there's only eighty-five million of us, and half of us are probably gonna end up in a senior housing facility. At some point, or many, or more than one facility, because they, they're chronological. You go into independent living first, especially if you live someplace else. Like if you live on the Cape, there's independent housing facilities which are not for people with disabilities yet. They don't require care. They just require communal services, common dining area, amenities, hair salon. You know, some of them center around golf or pool activities. The next step up would be assisted living. The next step up from that would be. A memory unit, uh, for people with dementia or Alzheimer's. The next step up from that would be long-term care, which is the new name for a nursing home. And then the overall facility that might have different component parts would be congregate care. Many of the congregate care facilities around here are church-run nonprofits. They're marvelous. They do a great job for the most part.
So I I'm fine with this, Mark. The reason I pulled Andover up was at the last meeting, when I said this was so stoked, and you said it was from Andover, that's how I ended up pulling it up. But I'm, I'm okay with this. I just, I have a couple of questions real quick, though, on it. Now, in our use table, we identify. In our use table, we identify it as a senior housing facility.
Right.
So could we change the label of of eight point six to match up with the use table? So it actually says senior housing facility?
What does it say now?
Just senior housing.
Okay, no problem. And here's the definition of senior housing facility.
In the back, in the back.
Yeah. There's there's all the various types that I just outlined.
So then the other the other question I had was it still says, so so we have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I just I just pulled something to plug back in, and I didn't check it that carefully. So sorry.
The the these are just the comments I made after our last meeting. So one of the goals of this is to preserve open space. So I think this is probably from Stoughton, which is a little more, which is a little more urban than Bridgewater. So some of these land space requirements, I just have a question on. So one of the goals of this is to preserve open space. Yet it only requires a ten percent open space per project and all the basically every zone we have A, B, C, D is twenty, twenty-five, or thirty. So it seems like all these other towns that are similar in size to Bridgewater have a thirty percent open space requirement.
Well, you'll never get the, you know, the you'll you'll get the campus style or something that approximates that, but you won't get the shoehorn style. And I don't, you know, maybe you don't want that. But again, with eighty-five million baby boomers, not everybody's going to afford the bucolic eight acre Elm Street in Andover site.
All right. So so my other question is is maybe maybe that I think in the use table, we basically allow it in A, B, and C, A and B, which is one acre, single family only, B, which is, you know, half acre to three quarters of an acre. I I think we should and do I think we should probably take it out of those two rural zones, R, A, and B, and C, and leave it in everything else that you have. It's just because it it kind of goes against everything that those zones were trying to achieve. It's more rural, more single family, more open space. You know, I can see it in D, which which is basically surrounding downtown over by the train, the university. And I can see it downtown. I can see it in the gateways and in South Business District, et cetera. But I just think having these big facilities and small facilities on two acres with only ten percent open space really don't doesn't belong in the residential neighborhoods like Auburn Street and South Street and things of that nature. So if we I I would, if we're going to keep it like this, I'd like to take it out of residential A, B, and C.
Let me just I'm seeing if I can. I have no idea how current Google Earth is. But we'll find out. I mean, you can set up different requirements for different districts too. So if you thought, you know, that in a in the R in the smaller, oh, that might be it. Oh, what's that?
It's just, I mean, with only ten percent open space and that type of facility, it's very it could become very commercial in a very residential zone.
It's somebody's house. So these are these are facilities that are residential in nature. And that has, I mean, it's not a, I don't I don't think of them as businesses. I think of them as residences. Yeah. I'm not seeing it on the.
Because, I mean, we we are farmland and stuff in residential A, B, and C. I mean, to to only have ten percent open space in those zones, I think it's crazy.
Well, you know, as Mark said, it could be, it could require thirty percent in A, B, for example.
Yeah, so you'd be making a choice in that district not to allow the shoehorn, but by allowing it somewhere else in town, you know, you you have you you'd preserve other options in other districts.
Why why couldn't we just simply do this and say you have to, in the open space shall be dictated by the current district?
Yeah, you could do that.
Because it's it's different. It's different in every district, and that way you just.
That makes sense.
So A, B, I think it's like twenty-five percent. C, D, it's like twenty percent. You know what I mean? It's just that way. That way, the development is consistent with the, even though we're allowing a different type of development, it's the the lot, you know.
Yeah, built out.
The build out. I mean, at least it's it's consistent in terms of open space and stuff like that.
Let me take a crack at that, and I'll I'll make a make a sliding scale out of the open space requirement.
And it's two acres. You don't think two acres is too small? I looked at some other towns. They have five acre minimum. Do you think two acres is fine?
Well, you know, my my client called Essex Living, who which operates out of Rowley, has a place in Worcester, at the foot of the hill where Holy Cross is. It's not two acres. It'd be lucky if it's thirty-five thousand square feet.
Last last question, if you went from me, right, that the independent living, it seems like most towns require dining.
That the the whole, it's just an apartment building unless you have some communal attributes.
Right, but what we're looking for is that, it's correct.
I am sorry. I didn't hear you, Patrick.
You want we want actual communal attributes with these.
Yeah, that's that's what separates it from just a regular old apartment building.
So can so in that independent living, it just seems like, just looking at other towns, again, Andover East and some of those other towns, they they do require dining and the independent living.
Okay, that's fair.
Just that way, it's very clear. It's not just a standalone apartment building, and it's it actually does have communal services that we require dining. You know, I think you put other things in like castle on and things of that nature.
Yeah, I had a very sad case that I litigated on behalf of a couple that moved into a age and place fifty-five and older in a town that I won't name. And as the 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 project ultimately went bankrupt and foreclosed, and the buyer out of the bank basically started negotiating with the town as to how he could Mickey Mouse things like care components. So what what before was a store that they could go to rather than jump in a car became, you know, three three things of, you know, pretzels or potato chips on a on a shelf that nobody attended to. And it was that kind of thing. They were really going against the spirit of the thing. So it's it's kind of difficult to define. Communal dining is relatively easy, but when you get into things like provision of care, provision of shuttle service, provision of retail services or personal services like a hair salon. You know, how many days a week are you going to micromanage? How often the salon keeper shows up on the premises? It gets it gets pretty arid to that.
I mean, we could change that pretty easily. You could just say a facility providing apartments rent with optional services on site for the convenience of residents, including dining, transportation, barber beauty, sundries, suppression of consumption, laundry services, and other amenities.
All right, I'll take a I'll take a crack at that. I think I think I would agree with you that an independent facility should have dining, but the but remember that both assisted and independent facilities still have a stove in them for the most my, you know, the people stop using them, and they just find it easier to punch their swipe card down at the dining facility at some point.
And just so we don't end up with people coming and saying, hey, I want to do fifty-five plus the public building all over town.
Yeah, no, I get that. I get that. The beauty of these facilities are for you, in addition to being a good home for good people, is that the tax revenue here is very much tipped on the side of free cash. So when you take the services that these kinds of facilities demand from you and you price it out, it's generally not more than about thirty cents on the dollar. And then that means that the other seventy cents is in free cash for your purposes. And with eighty-five million baby boomers, you you know, you can count on some revenue. Okay.
Other comments on this from Peter Boyd? I I know I'm speaking a lot, so I'm sorry.
All right. So this was something that we had in before. We had a planned development district that we took out, but then a lawyer very kindly requested that we put it back in because his client happened to own the planned development district. So we did. But the idea that we had discussed, we had simply changed the name here basically to Innovation District. And an innovation district is not on the map. It requires an amendment to the zoning ordinance. There is no limit to what it might be or include or how it might be designed. It's a two thirds vote of the city council in order to put it on the map and a special permit in order to get a building permit. So I was I was on a phone call today with the mayor of Haverhill and we were joking about the fact that it took nine years and eighteen drafts to get that passed by town meeting about a year and a half ago. And in the time since it was adopted, we've had two innovation districts. One was a failed. Actually, they were retiring. It was like a banquet facility on the Bradford side of the river, Merrimack River, and the folks were finally calling it quits. Big enough parcel that it could use something interesting. And Princeton Properties used this innovation district approach to propose a hundred and fifty units of straightforward apartments, not not forty B, not not affordable. The town's over ten, city's over ten percent. And also a small retail component. So they gave me a picture of what they wanted to do. I wrote the words. We went to the city council. They got the votes, and it's under construction. Even more exciting, I'm working on one right now where Sal Lupoli, the the pizza baron of Lawrence, who also has his foot in the door in Haverhill, wants to take some city owned property called the Gekki Deck. It's a parking garage. He wants to make a bigger parking garage, and he wants to revamp about, I think it's like two or three blocks of the downtown, very close to the river. This is after he invested a lot of money with a building right on the river, about ten stories high with a restaurant that I'm dying to go to when COVID slows down. So neither district allowed what these two proponents wanted to do. They came to the mayor. They came to the planning department. They said, this is the picture that we have in mind. And the mayor said, show me more. Ultimately, we worked out the language, and they're both, I'm I'm assuming that the second one will pass city council later this year. They're both on the map. That's a great step forward. Lexington is probably the biggest proponent of this with towns. I think they have twenty-six planned development districts, as they call them, innovation districts, as they would be called in Bridgewater. And the 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 whole notion here is that I can't think of everything, and neither can you. I I learned that lesson about fifteen years ago when a proponent, Hebrew Senior Living, came to Dedham. They had a hilltop on on the Charles, just to the east of one twenty-eight. And they said, we want to have an intergenerational campus on the top of the hill. Well, I looked in the book for a long time before I saw the words intergenerational campus, so we had to write it. And it's the Rashi School, assisted living, long term care, a childcare facility, and about ninety acres of open space. And you you wouldn't find that in anybody's book. Who the heck had in mind an intergenerational campus? So think of that whenever you think of the innovation district. You you can't possibly write it for that. There's no way your imagination is that broad. I've made my pitch.
Mr. Shay says this happens.
Thank you, Jennifer. Question, perhaps Jennifer for you or for for Patrick, if I may, but what number of what here would be called innovation districts were commonly for us known as planned development districts? What number of such districts actually exist in the town now?
We only have the one because it's specific to that area of town and that specific, those specific parcels owned by the Claremont Companies. The planned development district is specific to that, those parcels of land. So that's the only one that we have.
That's what I imagined. All right, thank you.
And that's because he had already developed it under those rules. If he was ever going to add it, add to it or change it, he would need those rules still to be in the book. So that's at his request, we put it back in.
I have a couple specifically questions. I believe you said in the pre-application process, you strongly encourage that they schedule, the developer schedule a pre-application maybe with the planning board. You don't require it. You're saying you just encourage it, correct? Why so?
Yeah, I I don't have any problem with requiring it. I think that's that's fine.
And I believe I can't find it right now that you said something in the effect that the permit granting authority is the council, not the.
Well, yeah. Again, that's to be negotiated. Obviously, the city council has to adopt the actual district boundaries and uses and dimensional requirements. Then if you wanted to go over to a special permit after that for another check and balance by having a board look at it, then it would be open ended as to who you would give the job to. It it could be the city council. It could be the planning board. It could be the zoning board of appeals. So it's just a matter of forum choice on your part. There's no correct answer there.
Well, I'm still unclear then. Are you saying that it may not require a special permit?
No, in fact, in the Princeton Properties, one in Haverhill, much to my surprise, the city council, which took, it had to adopt this by two thirds, would have been the special permit granting authority as well. And in their own minds, they already knew enough about the project that they didn't. It had been drawn up tightly enough in the language we wrote so that you could predict very much what was exactly going to happen. And they felt that it was redundant to put it through another two thirds vote. So they just approved the district and put it on what's called in in Haverhill Development Review, which is a staff review, Town Engineer, Building Department.
Well, I guess not to undercut by three council people here, but why would the council be the authority when the planning board would be the one that would know the laws and regulations better than the council?
Well, maybe it's the length of time that the Haverhill has been a city, but my experience in cities is that very often it is the council that grants the majority of residential special permits. So, for example, in Quincy, Revere, Haverhill, Medford, which I'm rezoning right now, it's a city council, though. That that's a power that they have assumed long ago.
Question that.
You know, you, how recently did you make the transition?
So so Mark, just so I understand this, so because maybe this will help Ray. I I'm trying to I'm trying to understand Ray's question and get get that answered. So.
Okay.
The council handles the zoning, just like they do now, and then we would handle the site plan, correct?
Well, once the council handles the zoning, you're writing the zoning. So you you could say whatever you wanted to say.
Right, right. But I think I think where the confusion lies is the innovation district is established by the council.
Yes.
But then it would come to the, then it would come to, just like it does now, it would come to the planning board for site approval.
If that's what you wanted it to do, that's what you could do.
So who who, if if it did, if if we adopted this innovation district, which looks like it's for commercial and industrial uses only, correct?
I I think I've broken it down into two types, residential and commercial. But I mean, obviously, mixed use projects are a little bit of both.
I I thought we I thought when we did this before, Mr. Devobrain, just maybe you can correct me that when we were looking at like a different type of planned development district, we were limiting it all just to try to foster the commercial industrial growth in town. I think we only have about thirteen percent. We were trying to focus this just on commercial and industrial. Was that true?
There was some conversation about that. I don't know that it ever came to fruition because we ended up taking it out. So I'm not sure that we fully. So I'm not sure that we fully fleshed that out, but there was some conversation about that, yes.
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
I mean, is this, is this is something that we'll look at tonight for the first time, correct? This innovation district?
As far as this public hearing is concerned, yes.
Is this something that's big enough where we should probably put this in one of those other packets that are going to come back to us at a later time, Mr. Devore?
I think it's definitely something you should re-advertise for.
I mean, I think it's probably something that's new enough and unique enough that you guys are going to want to spend some time thinking about it and understanding it to, to, you know, raise questions tonight, just to try to understand how the process could work and all of that. So, you know, if, if those questions are not answered or unclear this evening, I mean, you should definitely push it off.
I mean, there's, there's other policy changes we're going to have to make in addition at later times.
Yes, yes.
So why wouldn't we remove this? I mean, if we're just looking at, I mean, we're, we're still debating stuff, we've been debating for two years. Why don't we remove this and now put this in a packet to be discussed later?
I'm fine with that.
I mean, if that's, I'm, I'm just giving a suggestion, I want all the people to chime in, so.
I think that's a good idea.
That makes, that makes sense.
Okay, so I'll just pull it out and give it to you in a separate file.
Thank you.
And we can use it later, but it won't be part of this rewrite at this point, correct?
That's correct.
And I, I think that, Jen, did you get a chance to distribute that flex piece?
I sent it to Mr. Driscoll, I can send it to the rest of the board. I don't know, was that on for discussion this evening?
Well, I'm, since it's likely to suffer the same fate as innovation districts, I might as well just tell the board of the, the meeting about it. I've got to, I've got to find it here.
We had it, we had it in draft ten and then it came out.
Right, I, I went back to draft ten and pulled it out.
I mean, I think, I think the one that you, you wrote for draft ten is much better than what we have. Because the one, the one we have isn't working and it, I don't think we've had one proposed under the current. But it, it might be a significant policy change that we want on table until the next round or a council can submit that later or something like that, so.
I don't, I don't disagree that it's a major change that would need to be re-advertised. So this is to be in lieu of, what is it? Oh, our open space residential development, is that it?
Yes.
Yeah, your, your open space residential development, I think is, it's reported to me at least, it said very few takers, if, if not more than one.
I mean, we haven't had, so and I don't know if Carlton Hunt's on the, the phone, the, the line or something, but when I first got in the planning board, seven, eight years ago, it may be longer now, I, I don't remember. And Ray, you probably remember it. And I think Attorney Bobraski, you know what happened? That a gentleman from Shute Spire came up from the state and told us we weren't preserving enough open space.
Yeah, I was.
And required 60%.
Right, I, I took Jen on a little fishing trip to the west branch of the Swift, which happens to flow at the bottom of the hill from that town hall. And the, the town is primarily owned by the Cindy Jones, who is the largest holder of forest land in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So.
I mean, the intent was good, but it's just after being on the planning board, the learning about the planning board, the rules and regulations, that what we have really doesn't work, the lots are too small, you'd really need sewer, real effort to work. So we're getting more conventional development. This, prior to this, we, we only required 35% open space and we had a lot of those coming before us. And this kind of brings us back to 35%, but it makes the open space, better open space in that you can only have the same proportion of wetlands, stoplains as the entire parcel, things like that. So I think this would, would ultimately do a better job preserving open space, providing for some affordable housing, different bonus credits and things like that. I, I'm pretty familiar with this one because this was in all our drafts up through draft 10, I think.
Yeah.
I, I just think it's a much better, I don't, I don't know if we wanted to, you know, the open space committee wants to weigh in on it before we adopt it or what, but I, I just know what we have now from a planning board perspective is too restrictive and probably isn't the type of development we want anyway in time, so.
I think it also takes advantages, advantage of some different options in terms of ownership. So rather than build a small conventional subdivision with, you know, 20,000 or 30 or, or even 60,000 square foot lots, I could do a condominium project in which the units are single family with exclusive use areas, there'd be common maintenance contracts so that nobody would have to mow their own lawn. And the outside of the buildings would be held in common, subject to the exclusive use rights of the person living in the house. But for me, that, you know, as, as people get older, that's an attractive option. My wife keeps saying, well, you know, you could just hire somebody to do that. And I went, where? You know, there's nobody to do that, but if there was a management company doing it, that's, she's right. It's just the individual that I'm trying to hire is not available. The management company is readily available, but I need some, some bargaining power with a mass of people in order to hire them.
So, Mr. Devore, is it fair to say that most people on this, these committees haven't seen this yet?
Well, they've seen it through draft 10 to a point, but I don't believe they've seen it in this draft, it was not in this draft. So I think to your point, Mr. Chairman, it might make sense to leave it aside for now with the other, you know, policy changes, get some comments from conservation, from open space, from some of the committees to weigh in, and then, you know, look at this at a later date.
Yeah, and maybe one of the councils on this committee, once we've vetted enough, can submit that as a policy change later on, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm told, I brought this up with Michael and Jen the other day, that there's a, you know, a group that's working on more long range and policy oriented goals. So there should be some cross fertilization between the two groups.
Any board comments of the time of pressure?
That, those were the last of the policy changes.
I just said some cleanup stuff that, that lodging houses and trailer packs, they, they were removed from the use table. Those got added back, they were all, they were no across the board anyway, but should they be in there or should they not be in there?
Use is not expressly permitted or prohibited, so I can add them, but it's.
As long as you, as long as you think it was in.
No, no, that's, that's the way the bylaw is structured. So if they're not in there with a Y or an SP next to their name, they're not allowed.
So section 611, we, it's just, it's just missing completely. It, it wasn't our old ordinance. We capped the number of bedrooms in the mixed use to 27, and that was really because we only required one parking space per unit. So that worked out to the 1.5 unit, the bedrooms per unit. Should that, is that something that should just be moved to section 19, just as a cleanup?
We talked about this in our phone call a couple of weeks ago, Jen, do you recall what we decided?
Um, I don't, to be honest with you, I, I mentioned it as one of Pat's cleanup issues, but I don't remember if we ever had a decision or if we talked about it.
Well, it's, it's, it's an existing policy, it's just, it was just deleted. So that whole section 611 is gone. So I'm not, I'm not saying make any changes, I'm just saying it belongs in section, in the mixed use section. Can we just incorporate that into the mixed use section?
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I think if we are going to put it back, it should be back in the mixed use section and all.
Right, because the developers bounce around from 611 to 19 to the, it's just, it's just, if 611 is not stricken out, it's not yellowed, it's just completely missing. And it has to do with mixed uses, so if we could clean up the language and put it in there, I don't know if that's what we want or we don't want, so.
And 6, 611 is the old number, right, Patrick?
Yes.
Correct.
So where would it go if we were to put it back into the new?
It's, it has to do with mixed uses, it says, it clearly says mixed uses. It says, we, it says mixed uses may allow for shared parking with bikes or car sharing. Veterans are maxed out at 27 units per acre. But we, there's an error in there, we never, we never updated it for the bonus calculation. So with certain criteria, you can bump that up to 39 per acre.
So it should go to section 19 or?
We kept them, we kept the veterans, so the intent was, I believe, just because we allow for shared parking, so the business and residential uses can share parking. We only require one space per dwelling unit and then one for every three. So just to keep the, just to keep, just to be able to keep the parking down, a number of veterans.
I think it's section 19.
It's something that already exists, it's just, it's, it's disappeared.
All right, well, Jen and I will figure out where it goes and we'll revisit it and I'll put it in the next chapter. I'm making a list, you making a list, Jen?
Yep.
Okay.
So, Mr. Collins, do we want to open it up to public comment at this point? Are there more, do we want a more board discussion first?
Well, let's see if the board, let's see if either of the two boards have any questions first and then open it up to the public.
Fred or Bill? Yeah, I am interested in the mixed use section. Are there any other changes in what was section 19 that we should take a look at? We, we just, we just approved last night a change to central business districts on Broad Street. And it's, I, I'm, I'm interested if there's any other changes here within this, this draft that might, you know, affect what someone in the central business district, mixed use might do.
I don't believe we've changed the section 19, mixed use zoning at all.
Fred, did you have anything?
No, thank you, but that's actually an interesting question that Bill raised. So I, I, I think Jen, what you're saying is we don't have a change with respect to the, to the required percentage of commercial versus residential for that Broad Street project, am I correct?
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Any planning board questions before we move on to public comment? Mr. Devore, do we have anybody looking to speak from the public?
Yes, you do, Dr. Hart has his hand raised.
Greetings, how are you? I'm doing, I'm doing a sound check, I just want to make sure I'm being heard.
You can, will you hear you?
Thank you, Carlton Hunt, 80 Austin Street. Regarding, since my name was invoked earlier, regarding the flexible development, I'm looking forward to whatever preserves the maximum amount of trees during development. Basically, it stems from a previous development that basically clear cut 140 acres of 150 year old trees. And just basically just denuded the whole area. And so the interest that Pat referred to earlier was that we needed a way to encourage development, but not encourage development that just clear cut. And so that flexible development piece, I think it's appropriate to completely separate it out from this doc, this change right now, in keeping with the fact that it's supposed to have been sort of a Scrivener's, Scrivener's errand reorganization, not a policy document, change document at this point. The other thing is that I'm going to stay adamant about the fact that the gateway districts, which unfortunately were intended to be overlays, but the language clearly indicates that they're districts, that the gateway districts have a design review process and criteria. And I'm pretty insistent that that stays in this document, because if you take it out of the document, then you put it into rules and procedures or quote unquote, in the drawer. It weakens the ability to control the gateway and the purpose of the gateways, which is to ensure that we don't get strip malls, which they may not be the vogue right now. But the reason I want it in there or ask you to put it back in is that we need to be able to manage that without having to go through, without weakening the ability to change it. If it's in the rules, it can be changed easy. If it's in the zoning, it's harder to change. And the third point that I would make is there are a lot of other sections that were dropped out completely. We've heard about a couple that were just disappeared. I would like to see a table of all old sections that were, one, removed and aren't going to be included. Two, that are included but modified in terms of their nomenclature, where they are located. And three, those that are new. I think that the citizens deserve that level of knowledge in a table in order to really understand what, what's happening here with this. I'm, I'm not disagreeing with much of the changes. But I'm thinking that the citizens of the town really deserve to see that detail. Because most of us, other than us that actually punish ourselves by reading this kind of stuff often, are not expert in it. I would really like to see that comparative table done so we actually know what's been changed in the major way. It's because this is not just a minor update. Thank you.
Hey, Janet's iPad, is her hand raised?
Hi, this is Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. You hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. I definitely want to say I agree with what Carlton had just said at the last part of his speaking. And we definitely need, I, I need, what was the old that's been removed? What has been modified? And what are the new changes? Trying to follow this is very hard and there's 15 drafts, but and maybe some of the drafts are because of punctuation and capitalization and stuff. But we need, you know, we follow this and it's very hard to know what exactly is new at this point and what is left out. And I'd like to, you know, see that and more advertising, more public access to this. I've been following and I've lost track, I haven't seen anything lately. And, and I'm trying to follow this tonight and I'm just concerned there's going to be changes that I personally wouldn't like to see, just trying to follow it the best I can. And I think that would be very helpful. The other question I have is on the Perkins property that you changed, you know, with, took the industrial part of it out. And if they did sell it and if, if what they're doing is going to go through, it wouldn't matter. But what would happen if somebody wanted to be industrial in that area or say it didn't go through? How does that affect if, say, something like Perkins, an industrial business wanted to be in there? Is that affected by the change of making it all CBD? So I had those questions. So it just, we need more information for this zoning in general. Thank you.
I, I can't answer the second part of your question, but I refer you to the screen and I hope you're looking at something that says draft 13.
No.
Oh, okay, let me, let me stop my share and then go back and get this, hang on. I'm never sure what changing the thing on the screen does. Now, can you see draft 13?
Yes.
There's only two drafts between then and now. Draft 14 was corrected because my office manager made a table of contents. And draft 15 was one I just prepared in putting the yellow in that we talked about this evening. So this is a, this, this draft, as the front page says, shows you everything that's been strikeout. Everything that's new is in yellow. And everything that's black is existing text. If it was deleted as a section, you can see that because, for example, the purposes of the districts were wholly deleted. And there's the deletions right there. So all of the words of the old ordinance are accounted for as I just scroll through this. And you can see what is in the new one. All of the non-conformity section was rewritten, but you'll see there's all the old non-conformity section in strikeout. Parking, you can see what changed, what didn't change.
Okay, but is it?
You know, it's an exercise that works a lot better than a chart or a track. You can't do a track change version of this, because if I pick it up from the beginning of the old ordinance and I move it, it looks like it's all deleted and then you got to find it again 43 pages later. So I hand code this. And I have to take out the codes by hand too, when I prepare the final version. It doesn't sound, it sounds worse than it is. But you can see all of these performance standards. But you can see all of these performance standards are brand new, they're all yellow and.
And where do we find, where do we, sorry, where do we find this? Is it easy to find on the website?
I don't know, that's a Jen question.
Yeah.
I can easily resend this, that's, that's my.
It was, it was on, it was on the website up until I posted this most recent draft last week. So it was on the website until then, I can repost it to the website.
Yeah, that would be very helpful.
So Mr. DeVoe, can we put up draft thirteen, fourteen and fifteen on the website, please?
Sure.
With the table, with the table section and the definition section?
I will post, yes.
That would, thank you, that would be helpful and I do agree that we need to protect the gateway, thank you.
Can I, can I just interject? All of what Mark just said is true with the exception of section six point eleven. There was no evidence that it ever existed in this, there's no strikeout of it. It, it doesn't exist as a strikeout in this current version. So that's the one exception to what Mark just said.
Silva Engineering has a comment.
Good evening, it's Larry Silva. I'm just kind of nervous about what I'm hearing, what I'm reading. Yeah, I kind of come away sometimes with a feeling like we had a flat tire around the side of the road. And in order to get going, what we've done is we've taken the entire car apart and now we're trying to put it back together and whether or not it's the same as what we had before and covers everything that we originally had in bylaws and made it better. I get a little nervous about that when I see this, this innovation district thing put in there and it's even got a special permit fee in there of eight hundred and fifty dollars. It just tells me that these things are just being cut and pasted from other locations. And they don't, do they really hold together cohesively as being a bylaw for the town of Bridgewater? So I, I just caution everyone to make sure that any kind of change like this is cohesive, it holds together and it works for this town. Not a hundred and fifty other towns that have had other experiences or have something similar or have something that's totally different than what we are. But for the town of Bridgewater, we had a bylaw, we have a bylaw now that's not totally bad. It's a bylaw that needed some changes. Be careful how much you change at one time. And because if you try to make something run later and you missed major parts of it, then it'll be a nightmare to try to correct. Don't need to, I'm not trying to be a glass half empty kind of guy because that's not me. I'm just telling you to be cautious.
And Pat Neri has a comment.
Hello, I would like to just mention that I totally agree with Carlton's statements and Janet Hanson. I feel also that there really has to be more outreach to the general public. These zoning issues are very, very important and the general public is not aware that this has even taken place. I posted something on Bridgewater residents this afternoon, but it was, I had no detail. I didn't know what was going to take place, there was nothing on the agenda other than a public hearing. There was nothing on the CED agenda. I had to go to the planning board agenda to get somewhat of a detail. And now we've gone through this workshop, which I thought we were going to have for the actual public prior to this. So I'm, I'm confused, but the other thing is I guess we were, you were eliminating the PDD district and the Claremont company wanted it back in. So now it's called the Innovation District?
No, that's not, it's called, it's still called the PDD district. And it's the old language and it's in the bylaw under the name PDD.
Yes, I know that, but you're, you're suggesting that it become Innovation District, right?
I'm not suggesting that we eliminate the PDD, I'm suggesting that we add the Innovation.
Oh, so we'll have PDD and Innovation?
Correct.
Oh, okay, yeah, but going back to the request that the attorney wanted to put the PDD back in, you were going to suggest eliminating it?
Yeah, because there's only one property in town that we thought was dormant when we were discussing it before. We didn't, we didn't think that it would be likely that they would come back to either add more or change what they had. So that was the discussion when, when we were contacted by the attorney, I, I don't recall his name. But he politely asked us to put it back in and we politely said, sure, so.
So where is the, where is the Innovation District going to go?
We don't know because nobody's proposed one yet.
Oh, so it's just language that we will try to find an assignment for?
It's providing for that possibility.
I consider it to be an invitation more than a, than an actual location. So come to us, come to us with a parcel, could be vacant, it could be, you know, tear down. Tell us what you want to do there, it's more than likely it's not in the book. And we'll see whether or not we think that's a good idea together.
So the next meeting, it's going to be continued public meeting and will there be more workshops?
I think we have to decide that tonight, if we're going to send it back to the council or continue or, oh, what? But we haven't decided that yet, correct, Mr. Collins?
Yeah, it's pretty clear we're not going to wrap it up tonight, that's for sure.
Thank you. Melissa Raymond Data has a question.
Hi, good evening, Melissa Raymond Data, three seventeen Lakeside Drive, Bridgewater. I'd just like to echo the comments of Pat Carlton and Janet that, you know, there have been a number of drafts of this. I don't believe that all of the drafts have been online and readily available for the public to review. I personally, I spent a lot of time and wrote a letter in September with regard to this. And I'd like to cross check the latest draft to that letter to see if, if any of my concerns were heard. You know, I really, I really do think that there needs to be more outreach and there needs to be more promotion of this and I have expressed that. Asking why, you know, there are no notices on Facebook or social media. I do know that there was something on the, the opener page of the town of Bridgewater, but this is a big deal. It is a big deal to the residents and, you know, hearing that the attorney for a developer in town has access to the gentleman that's creating the zoning. What about, what about the residents? Who do we have access to? And we need to be heard as well, so those are my comments, thank you.
And just, just for the record, Mrs. DeVoe, we did, we did get Mrs. Ramon, you had sent that out to us, correct? I, I, I remember reading it, so.
Yes, I did forward it to the board.
I remember, I remember Mrs. Ramon, that one of your comments was on the open space community development that you made. And that, that's existing text, the flexible development that Attorney Bobrovsky proposed this evening would be the change if we decided to, to do that. Though I, I remember reading the letter and that was one of your questions or comments.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Wood has his hand up.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to reiterate, I, I said this, you know, back in probably July, we've been at this for quite a while. I, I understand exactly the concerns of the, you know, the citizens. The, the appropriate place also is to reach out to your town councillors. And I say that because, you know, I see the path forward for this is we're, we're pretty far, we're pretty far afield from what was actually introduced into the council and what we're discussing in iteration fifteen of this. And it's definitely going to have to be reintroduced to the council in a, in a modified, more finished form. And then reintroduced back to the planning board by the council and have a new hearing. And I agree with, you know, transparency and communication. We, we have to have it on the webpage, we have to announce it's out there and get people to, you know, give input. But even now is the right time to give input, it, it's going to have to go through a cycle again. And, and I'm hoping that, you know, when we conclude tonight, we've decided that we need probably at least one more workshop before we go through that iteration with the council again, thanks.
Dr. Hunt has his hand raised again.
Thank, thank you Jennifer, yeah, Carlton Hunt, Austin Street. I'm asking for the table to help the citizens that don't read this to know what has actually been modified, changed, removed and, and et cetera. I've, quite frankly, I worked for the federal government under contract with a lot of this kind of work. And one of the things we found that was extremely effective in a communication perspective was to put together that change table. Because that way you can say section five became section twenty-one with modifications. Section three was deleted, but because it wasn't relevant. Section five, seven is added. That would help the public understand what we're really facing here. We're not looking for the Scrivener's issues. By the way, I'd like the document reviewed for the term in order to. In order in front of two is not good English. I think that's not necessary, but I'm going to stop here because I think that table would help people that are leery about this. And there are professionals and citizens and others that are leery about what's going on to help them understand and actually get behind this, thank you.
And Janet's iPad had some questions in the chat, I don't know if she wants to bring those up?
Hi, Janet Hanson again, Pleasant Street. One of the comments I had, which I forgot was, I hear the attorney, and I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your name. But you keep bringing up comparison to other towns, excuse me, cities. And, you know, you bring up Quincy, Haverhill, Lawrence, Worcester and others that, and Stoughton. Those aren't us, we're not them. I, I think it's time not to compare us to them, that's not our community. The other was, he mentioned that the attorney, I believe it was Claremont's attorney, went to you and, and went to you and said that you'd like to have, you'd like to have the PDD kept in there. Unless he's a citizen of this town, how does an attorney representing a developer get to tell us what to keep or not keep in our bylaws? So, and again, we really need a lot more communication for us citizens who care. Thank you.
So, so just to keep it, just to keep it moving, right? It, it, does it make sense, Mrs. DeVoe and Attorney Bobrovsky, to, to update everything that we discussed tonight to a draft sixteen? And get all the changes that we've made from thirteen to sixteen posted with all the, with the table of uses with the, with the definition section? And then we can, you know, hopefully it doesn't take six to four months or however it took between this workshop and the last workshop. I mean, in a couple of weeks, two, three weeks, can we have that click, that, that updated version based on this evening? Have everything, have, have a bunch of things posted online so people can see what's been changed, what's been removed? And then have, try to adopt or come to a, like, like a council would said, it has to start over anyway, so we can, we can reintroduce that new document to the council and start the process over again, so hopefully we can get to the point of adopting an ordinance or how do, how should we handle that?
Well, I think there's some things from tonight's conversation that are readily apparent and I'll make them. For example, pull out the Innovation District, flex gets deferred until later. So that's easy enough. The nitty gritty stuff, Jen and I will compare notes and make sure that we've got our, you know, our ducks lined up. It doesn't look to me like it should take more than a couple, three weeks. And then we can get a draft circulated and have another workshop.
Can we get as much of this posted for the residents online as possible? And this is the vote, maybe everything from draft twelve or thirteen to now and all those tables, you know, by, by the end of this week?
I will, I'll do my best, I just, I would ask for some patience as my office is extremely short staffed with vacancies and medical issues at the moment. So I'm a one man show at the moment, so I'm doing my best for all boards and committees and land use. So I will do my best to have it done by the end of the week, if not, it'll be done over the weekend.
So how do we proceed from here? I mean, do we, do we want to just continue this public hearing? Oh, you know, three weeks to our next, to us, not the next planning board meeting, but the next one?
I don't see the point, my, I think the point would be more to anticipate that the next meeting would be another workshop and that the public hearing will need to be re-advertised.
So should we close this public hearing and just schedule a workshop?
Yeah, that's what I would do, you're going to have to re-advertise a new public hearing anyway, even if you were to continue this one. Because the subject and scope of the article is, is rapidly changing. So let's get the workshop to get to the article and then the article can be re-advertised for public hearing.
That makes sense.
So, so Pete, essentially what we do is both committees would close our public hearings with the recommendation that we're not recommending this version. But we, we plan on resubmitting within the next couple of, you know, next month or two?
Right.
Can I just, can I just ask, Mr. Chair, what, what would be the purpose of the next workshop? What, I mean, it seems like we've, we've talked about and decided a number of things tonight. Why don't we just go to the new draft and the new public hearing?
I think we would need to review, Attorney Bobrovsky will come back having made these edits. And I think we want to just look over them, make sure they're right, just to review.
And I'm happy to do that with a, with a smaller group, but I would want there to be some cross checking on behalf of the membership. I mean, it might be, it might be the kind of thing where a representative of the council and a representative of the planning board meet with me and Jen on an afternoon Zoom, takes place from three to five, we're done. Now we know, if we got to tweak it again, we tweak it again without a workshop and it goes to advertising.
Yes, it's got to go through the council for any of that action. So I think, you know, the, the ordinance that we have in council now, which by the way, pretty much gives us three councillors a gag order outside of the council from discussing it because we can't discuss measures before the council. But it needs to, we need a final piece that can be reintroduced as a change or, and or, you know, a new, a new ordinance introduced into the council, abandoning the old one. And then bring, and then apply that back to the planning board and, and our committee. And then you'll, then you'll have to advertise the hearing and open a hearing based on that new, that new format. You know, what I'm hoping through any further discussion is that we get to the point where there's, there's no changes in the document that's put into the, into the council. Because again, every time you make a substantive change, you know, it's going to go through that process and if it's, if, if it's, say, for an example, a councillor decides to add a section to the zoning code that we haven't talked about. I can't imagine that would happen, but there's always that possibility.
So, does it make, does it make sense to, how, so how do we review, how do we all review it before it goes to the council, so we're comfortable with it? So it can come back to us, how would you suggest we do that?
Well, I, I'm suggesting, I like the idea of where, you know, Jen and the attorney get together and make final edits. Maybe, maybe add, you know, representative from each of our boards just to be there. But get that done, get it into that, that shape. Go through this process one more time, we'll call it a workshop if you want. So it's in good shape and then someone has to reintroduce it or introduce a change into the council again to get the, to get that step done. I, I would rather see us do the work here, get the language that everybody's comfortable with here before we go back to the, the council and start that process over again.
I think Jen and I would find it invaluable to have a, a member from each board kind of helping us make the call, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, for, for my, to help me look at changes, I, I really liked Carlton's idea. It doesn't necessarily have to be a change document where you're, where you're, you know, itemizing changes. It doesn't necessarily have to be a change document where you're, where you're, you know, itemizing changes, but a summary of what we're doing. So, so like tonight, you know, it was mentioned that we're not changing the mixed use. Yet we did talk about section six with the parking that could be affecting 19. We experienced that, you know, a year ago. So that would help for also a communication tool with the general public so that they get a sense of what's going on. And then I know that maybe the table of contents has 15 pages to it. I personally don't recall seeing a table of contents. Just doing a table of contents of heading one, the section headings will help me go through the 120 page document much easier. You experienced that yourself when you were looking for like innovative district, you didn't know what, what page to flip to. Just having that on there might, would probably be helpful when we put it up on the website and take a look at, at there as well. Does that make, all make sense?
All right, so. Do you just want the chairs to work with you on this, like me and Pete, just to review it before I can just to, I wrote down everything we talked about tonight? So I can compare what I wrote down to what you guys wrote down. Just basically all you need us to do is just check it for compliance with tonight's meeting. And then it's going to come back to the whole board for a workshop in a month, right?
Whatever the board wants to do, yeah, I mean, it's up to you guys.
I thought that small meeting was to preclude the workshop with the whole committee.
But I think to Mr. Wood's point, he wants it to come back so everybody can see
Okay.
all the changes and then we'll just vote that night to send it back to the councils. Am I correct, Mr. Wood?
Yeah, it's going to be draft 16 if I understand the process. So, you know, just everybody sit through, look at draft 16, see if there are any further questions. If not, then we're going to, then the next council meeting, we can reintroduce it and send it back for the hearing process here at the planning board.
But you want everybody to review, you want everybody to review draft 16 in a workshop like this?
Well, I think, so, so I think everybody needs to review it, needs to be published, you know, put it out there. I think it would be beneficial if we schedule time like this with a zoom where everyone then has the opportunity to talk about draft 16 if there are any questions. You know, hopefully that'd be a quick meeting if no one has questions at that point.
I agree with that process.
Okay, so.
That makes sense.
So just so I'm clear, we want to close this public hearing with, with no recommendation on this ordinance at this point and send a, put it to the council that we're working on, we're workshopping it. And we'll be sending back an amended version. We'll, we'll get everything up online so people have more access to the last versions and things like that. We'll create a, you know, either Peter, I, whoever else wants to do it, we can work with staff just to, or staff can just send it out to everybody in advance. So we can send comments back and say, yep, looks like all the corrections were made. That, that might even be easier if you want. And then, and then we can have a workshop a month from now and, and say, hey, you know, now we have to track changes. We have the table of contents. We have more, you know, we, we agree with all the changes that were made. We send that back to the council for re-advertising and then we have another public hearing, correct?
That sounds good to me.
Don't ask me to repeat that.
Yeah, that, that, the only, the only minor correction is we just send it back to planning board and then it re-advertizes at this level. For the hearing.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to close the public hearing from the Community Economic Development Committee? Do you hear a second?
Fred, you're muted, but I'll second Fred's motion. He can.
Second. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
All right. You got, you got to do roll call and then.
Roll call.
Okay, Fred?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Pat, do you want to do the same?
Yeah, you got to make your recommendation. Do you want me to close the public hearing first? That's all right. So do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
All right, Mr. McDonald, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Gallagher? Any discussion? Mrs. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. O'Giammy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And I mean, yes. So do you want to make your motion, Mr. Columbotus?
Oh, I will make a motion to make no referral to the town council at this time.
Second that.
Fred?
Yes.
Yes, Bill?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes also.
Just in case you got lost in the shuffle, I, I resent to Jen just 10 seconds ago, the table of contents from draft 14, so.
Do we have, do we have a motion to, or do we have a motion to make no referral to the town council at this point?
Yes.
But, but also let them know that we're working on draft, you know, an updated draft.
Yes. I'll make the question.
Is that Mr. Greenough, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. O'Giammy? Any discussion? Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. O'Giammy?
Yes.
And I mean, yes. Okay, now, do we want to schedule a workshop that we can advertise for the, for the draft that we want to look at? Or, you know, the corrections and things we talked about tonight? Could we do that not at our next meeting because Attorney Bobraski said he needs two to three weeks. So if we went four weeks out?
Yeah.
That would make sense.
What, what night is that? So we can confirm that Attorney Bobraski is available?
March 2nd?
No, February 16th is your next meeting. After the, your next meeting is the second of February. And then you have February 16th.
But you set a month, you set a month out, so wouldn't that be?
Okay, we can do March 2nd.
Good, good. Could you do? I will not be here March 2nd, so I, I'll be out of the country, so that won't work.
How about February 16th?
I just scheduled a meeting, the town meeting in Richmond needs me that night. I bet you don't even know where Richmond is.
Next, Pittsfield.
Next to where?
Pittsfield.
So I, I just, I mean, like this, this drags on and you forget what happens. Is it, is there another night we can do or?
I could do the 15th and I could do.
The 15th of Tuesday is our town council.
You know what, you know what, I'm confusing. The town meeting in Richmond is Valentine's Day. I just have a phone call on the 16th, so I can do a meeting on the 16th.
Okay, so can we, do we, can we schedule a workshop that evening as I go to the council, the planning board?
Yes.
Planning board meets that night anyway, correct, Mrs. DeBoerby?
Yes, and we have a, a public hearing scheduled for the new proposed warehouse on 900 Bedford Street at 6:30. So I don't know if it's possible if everybody wants to maybe come in a little earlier before that.
I would prefer that in case I have another meeting that night.
People do 5:30 or does that not work?
I can do that.
I can do that.
How about both boards?
Works for me.
That works for me.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, so we'll schedule a workshop for 5:30 on February 16th.
That's going to be a little tricky for me just because my, my son's going to be about a week old then, so we'll see on my end, but try to best I can.
I want to zoom, I want to see him on Zoom.
Got to get a webcam or something.
Mr. Chairman Driscoll, you had said advertise, what did you mean by that?
On the website, right?
Oh, I just, it's pretty much, I'd like to have as much information as we can on the website. And maybe it, it'll be a posted public meeting, but it won't be a public hearing, so people won't be notified. But can we put something on the Community Economic Development page or, you know?
Just on the calendar, right?
On the calendar.
Yep, I'll, I'll work some stuff out to get the word out.
Okay, Jen, we'll compare notes next week.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks to everybody.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Columbotus, your committee doesn't have any more business with us this evening, correct?
Right. So do I have a motion to close the meeting of the Community Economic Development Committee? Right, second by Bill. Fred?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, closed at 8:38.
Good night, thank you guys.
Night.
Thank you.
So, Mr. McDonald? Are you still on? Mr. McDonald?
Yep, yes, sorry. I have some microphone issues here.
If you, if you, I'm sure Mrs. DeBoerby can, can help you, but I have some conflicts with these next couple items. I didn't sit in on the subdivision that's being proposed because my mother's one house removed from it.
Okay, gotcha.
Then I have conflicts, I have personal conflicts with the other two items being discussed. So I am going to sign off for the evening.
All right.
So I am okay if you, if you guys do want to vote for the minutes, I'm okay with the minutes. I know Jane sent some changes, but overall I'm okay with those minutes. So if, if you guys want to proceed with those, you can go with those time as well. But unless you guys need me for anything else, I have. I'm going to, you know, we, we own a house next to one of these and I have conflicts with the other two, so I need to sign off.
That's why you dragged out all night. Okay, thanks.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
All right, so it looks like next we have a public meeting, a request modification for Old North Estates, Gallagher Engineering. See, I'll get for that here.
You should be able to unmute, Frank. Can you unmute yourself, Frank?
Okay. How's that?
Good.
All right. Well, good evening. I have something to discuss with the board that I think is infinitely more simple than what you've all just been through. So what we have is a minor modification to Old North Estates. It's just, it's a two lot subdivision that was approved just about two years ago now. It's off of North Street. It's a private road that's about 300 feet long with a cul-de-sac at the end and served by town utilities. And the, the original design plan called for a sewer main that was to go right down the center line of the road and then go into North Street to an existing sewer main that runs up and down North Street. Build a manhole at that connection and connect this, this two lot subdivision into the main on North Street. It's under construction now. And what we found was that the town's sewer department had, had stubbed a six inch sewer stub onto this property. And that was, I guess, revealed during construction, sometime after the design was completed. And the sewer commissioner asked that we make a connection to that six inch stub rather than do what we had originally designed, which would have meant first digging into North Street and second, creating a manhole around that existing main and disrupting that. So it's, it's a better solution. And so that's what we've got. It's just as simple as that. We've, we've got a stub available on the property and we're connecting at that point rather than connecting in North Street as we had originally designed it. And we're doing it at the request of the sewer department. So I mean, to me, it's very much a minor modification. It's, it's really just a field change that, that we found it was going to be a simpler and cleaner and less disruptive solution. So that's what we've got.
And you have Mr. Tanzi, town engineer on the line, if you have questions for him. I know he sent a report earlier today that I forwarded to the board.
Yeah, I believe I got that. Just tried to pull that up here. Is, is there anything you would like to summarize from that report, Mr. Tanzi? Or, I mean, it seems like a pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have any real issues with the, with the concept. It's unfortunate that the contractor has, you know, installed the, the modifications before the modifications were formally approved by the, the planning board. But the, the theory that they are achieving is in line and is meeting the goals that the sewer department wanted to see. They, they, it basically keeps North, North Street intact, unnecessary excavation in the road, avoiding disruption and alterations of the, of the sewer line in North Street. And I did get a chance to go out there and take a final look at the, the of the site. And my, one of my concerns with the, the modification plan was the setback distances of the water services from the sewer trunk line. What the contractor did is he didn't, he did not build the water services according to that plan. He put them on the left side and he offset them 12 feet from the trunk line sewer, the new trunk line sewer. Code requires a minimum of 10 feet. So this is a good thing, not a bad thing. He also double sleeved the water services where they crossed a leg of the section of the sewer. And then he ran them up into the, into the site. So what was actually constructed, I like better than what was shown on the modification plan. And I have also been in contact with, with Jonas, the sewer superintendent. And he, he has been in contact with the contractor. And he does want certain elements of the, the installed utilities exposed so that he can visually see the, the construction of them. And it's my understanding that the contractor has agreed to do that. I will probably also be out there with Jonas to visually inspect. I did get a chance to view some photographs that was supplied to us by the contractor. And I did forward them to, to the board or to the CED, I should say. And they do reveal the photographs that where the water mains were crossing the sewer leg. They were double sleeved and it also revealed that magnetic indicator tape was placed on top of the water services. And this is so that the utility can be marked out pretty accurately by DigSafe in the future if they need to do a repair or if they're doing other work where they just need to know where that utility is. So those two photographs, you know, I felt good about looking at. So, you know, fundamentally, what they're proposing to do, yeah, that's, that's the indicator tape that they placed above the water service connections. Off to the left of that, you can't see it, but it's buried, is Off to the left of that, you can't see it, but it's buried, is where the, um, where the sewer line is. So, yeah, that, yeah, that right there, those are the two water service, services and the, the black pipe is the, the water service pipe, the two inch water service pipe. The, um, the, the aqua or the blue colored pipe, that would be, um, a pressurated PVC sleeve pipe. And this, um, these two water services here are crossing over a segment of the sewer line beneath it. You can't see it, but, um, it's under there. Um, so, you know, that, that's a good thing, that, that meets code. Again, it's got its, um, horizontal setback of at least twelve feet off that sewer line, so. Yeah, it, it, it pretty, it, it's a little bit different from what was originally approv- approved on the, definitive subdivision plan, but it's tantamount to being the same. Um, it just avoids digging up the road and altering the, the existing sewer line.
Excellent. And you don't, you don't anticipate any, uh, issues going from eight to eight inches to six inches on the, uh, pipe diameter?
No, I don't. I, that was, um, you know, that was something that was looked at and discussed. It's, um, it's two houses. Um, there are plenty of sewer manholes on a relatively, uh, short run. So that, that sewer line is very accessible. And the, um, it's, it also has a pretty good pitch on it. It's a two percent pitch. If, uh, if a clog did occur, it could be easily accessed and, and, uh, either snaked or, um, there, there are ways that you can blow it out through pressure, pressurized equipment from what I understand. So I, you, you know, and it's, um, it's only got to be a very low flow anyway, so if they, if they have to do any type of, uh, snaking work, I mean, they could probably do it while a sewer is actively live. Um, if they do it at the right time of the day. Uh, worst case scenario, they'd have to, you know, ask the two residents to, you know, not use the water for an hour or so to, to fix a clog. But, you know, I don't anticipate that being, you know, a, 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 a problem. I mean, if, if it does occur at all, it would most likely be very few and far between. You know, situation, so. Uh, that's, that's, you know, about all that I have on it.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any other board questions for Mr. Tanzi or Mr. Gallagher?
I, um, I just wanted to clarify and I want to make a comment too. So, Mr. Tanzi, you, what you're saying is even though the, uh, developer did not follow your, your procedure correctly, it's fine. You, you, you have no, no, you have no problem with what has been done so far. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, but we will, we will verify with, um, some, uh, you will, certain things will be exposed. Jonas and I will go out there just to verify, but I don't anticipate any, any type of issue.
Okay, then I, I have one comment for Mr. Gallagher and I, and that is I think you're taking a serious chance in, in us closing this down because you went ahead and did something without the approval of the board. And I can't remember that happening in, in forever in my mind. I think you're making, you, you potentially maybe you potentially harm yourself in going ahead without the approval of the, uh, the town engineer. So I guess we're going to work this out, but beware in the future.
Okay, anybody else? So I guess our, our first thing to do is determine if this is a major minor modification. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, in my opinion, I believe it would be a minor modification. I don't know if anybody else on the board has thoughts on that.
I'll make a motion that it's a minor modification.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Alrighty. Any, uh, any other comments? Alright, uh, Mr. Gella?
Yes.
Mrs. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Regimian?
Yes.
And who am I forgetting?
Just you.
Oh. And I'm a, I'm a yes. Okay, so, uh, I guess that brings us to the discussion of whether or not to approve the minor modification.
I can motion to approve the moderate modification based on Mr. Tanzi's recommendation.
And then I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Ray, second by Jean. Uh, any discussion? Mr. Regimian?
Yes.
Mrs. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Gella?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Alright.
Okay, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you for your report. My agenda, yeah.
Yeah, sharing my agenda again, sorry.
I, I try to keep an email one up, but so many tabs, everything gets lost.
Um, so we can, we can do the minutes last. I had done that in case Pat had stayed for that. If you want to do the request for release of bond funds next.
Yeah, yeah, let's take that.
So, um, this, um, is Crimson Heights and the developer has previously sent a request to release all the bond funds. And at the time, um, Mr. Tanzi had done a review and said that there was, um, some items, um, that still needed to be done. And so we let the developer know that and I believe he's corrected all those issues. Mr. Tanzi submitted this final report last week. And I believe he's recommending the release of everything except for the maintenance money that we hold for drainage, um, but he could speak to that.
Yeah, I, I got out there and I did look at, uh, what was done. Um, a lot of the, uh, work that was done had to do with, um, the, the water gates, as you can see on the, um, uh, on the list. And I, I checked, you know, I verified with Jonas that he, actually, or one of his guys went out there and, and checked it and verified and it was to their satisfaction. When I went out there, I could see that, um, a lot of these water gates had been painted up and that they were, uh, a, a newer section, so. Things did, the work did get done, uh, for the, for the water main. There was also, uh, some cleanup work uh, with the detention basin. As you recall, the, um, the storm we had in, in October, late in October, that, that knocked down a tree in one of the, um, in, in one of the detention basins. So I had them clean that out and they did that. Um, the biggest thing or the biggest concern that I had and, uh, Paul DaCosta had was, um, with the, the method of how they, um, constructed the berm as, as it, um, butted up against the, the driveways. And there, there was a lip there that we had the concern that if a plower to, you know, plow down the driveway into the street, that the plow would catch the lip of that, that berm and, um, and, and dislodge the berm and damage the berm out, out on the street. So what they did to remedy of that, they, they milled down the, um, that lip of the berm and they made it flush with, um, with the surface of, of the driveway pavement. And as a result, when, when, i- if the driveway gets plowed, the plow will not catch uh, that lip because the lip has been removed. It's been, uh, milled down, so. And basically, uh, to the best of my knowledge and what I can, could see out there that they have, satisfied the, the, the comments that I made in my, my letter here. And, um, I, I don't see any other outstanding issues. And they, they did provide proof as, as requested that, um, the proprietary storm water treatment units have been uh, maintained and, um, have been pumped out. So they also installed hoods on the catch basins. That was another thing that, uh, that is just a construction item that wasn't done. But they, they did in fact do that, uh, construction item too. So I don't, I don't see any outstanding work items that remain to be done at this point.
Hey, excellent. So, uh, so your recommendation would be to release the bond minus the five thousand dollars?
Um, that would be correct. Um, Azu had wanted, uh, I mean, what we're doing right now is we're retaining ten thousand dollars for, um, future basin maintenance. I'm not sure if, when this was approved, if you were retaining five or if you want to, uh, retain five or, or, or ten. I mean, that, that's the option of the board. Maybe Jennifer can weigh in on that. I'm not.
Yeah, I did, I did research that and I looked at the original bond calculation. At that time, it was five thousand dollars. So the, the maintenance on this almost five thousand dollars.
So you'd recommend that's all we hold in keeping?
That's correct because that's what the original bond calculation was for.
Okay, excellent. Any other board questions?
No, I would just ask that when you make your motion to release the monies, that you do it including all interest?
Check your video.
So, Mr. Tanzi, you, when they milled that down, are you okay on how that looked?
Yeah, I, I thought it looked, I thought it looked better than what it was. You know, if you, if you drive by it, it, it looks fine. You, you know, it's not anything that's unsightly or aesthetically unpleasing.
Okay.
Alright, I guess if there is further commentary, be looking for a motion to approve the, the bond minus the, uh, five thousand and including the interest.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to release the bond for Crimson Estates in the amount, um,
Just release all remaining monies, including interest minus five thousand dollars.
Minus five thousand. I don't know if you want to make, yeah, how technical you are. Releasing all monies except for the five thousand dollars, including interest.
Second.
Any, uh, food discussion? Alright, uh, Mr. Gella?
Yes.
Mrs. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Regimian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
And then, um.
That brings us to the drainage issue.
On Stone Hill, yeah. So, um, Mr. Tanzi had sent this letter and then today subsequently we received a follow-up letter from the developer. So I don't know, Mr. Tanzi, if you want to start with your findings and then we can go into Mr. Silva's letter.
Right, um, uh, just, um, a, a, a very brief history. The way this, um, uh, the lot, we'll call it Lot One, was graded. There was a section of lot, on Lot One that was, um, according to the approved plan, should have been left in its natural state because what happens is water from Lot One and from, um, uh, Mr. Foley's lot flowed to a low-lying area that, that basically straddles the, the property line between Mr. Foley and, and Lot One. And there's probably a little bit more storage area that would, would settle out in Lot One. This, this is under the existing condition, okay? And the, the proposed plan was, was to preserve that area so that it would flood in the same manner and that they would have, um, a swale that would drain that area to the rear of Lot One and have it go out in, you know, and that was part of the order of conditions and, and so forth. And it would drain out to the resource area out back. Well, what happened was on Lot One, they filled most of that area. And so runoff was coming down that, that hill where it was filled. And then runoff from the Foley lot would run towards the toe of the slope of, of where it was filled and it would, it would stop. It wouldn't have any place to, to settle. It wouldn't have any place to, um, disperse or overflow or be evacuated from that area in any, in any way. And, and the result of that on a heavy uh, rainfall event, um, Foley lot experienced, um, a, a, a lot of standing water. Um, it was probably in the order of, it appeared to be in the order of six to eight inches in some areas and it, it, you know, it expanded on his lot quite a bit. I mean, it wasn't a, a, a small puddle. So. There, there's a couple of things that could be done. Have the Lot One graded per the approved plan is, is an option. Or uh, another option would be to, uh, regrade the swale that's, that's out there. The swale that's out there only captures runoff from Lot One. But it, it does not transmit any runoff from the Foley lot because it's approximately twelve to eighteen inches higher than the existing grade on the Foley lot. Uh, the swell per plan was at a lower grade. The, the swell as designed per the approved plan, I should say. It was about twelve to eighteen inches lower. Uh, the, the applicant is proposing to remove part of the, the, the berm on, on the Foley side of the lot to allow water to uh, get into that swale and, and be evacuated, but I have not seen any real plan to be able to verify the, the hydraulic efficiency of that plan. I, I mean, the, the, um, uh, the applicant Silver Engineer can, air, Silver Engineering can speak more to their design than what I can at this point. Because I have not seen, um, a revised plan. I, I do know that they were out there. They did take some shots. I did talk to Larry Silver, um, last week. So I know that he's working on it, but I don't know, uh, exactly what the final resolution that they're proposing is at this time.
So we have received a letter that I emailed you out earlier today from Mr. Silva's office. Um, I can share that. Um, I also just like to remind the board that this, uh, street has been already accepted. It's a, a public way. It's no longer really within the board's jurisdiction as a subdivision. Um, but this area in question is under a conservation commission order of conditions. And the conservation commission would have jurisdiction through their certificate of compliance. So there is an opportunity for the conservation commission to handle, um, any situation. So I will share Mr. Silva's letter. And then if you'd like, um, I believe Mr. Silva's on the phone still. If you'd like him to speak.
I think you just touched on one thing I'm kind of confused about, which is probably just inexperience in, in doing this. Uh, what? Yeah, what, what, what relief can the board even provide here? I'm not familiar with this kind of like corrective action kind of thing coming before us. If that makes sense?
Yeah, so.
I have a question, Jen. I mean, you're telling us that we can't do, we don't have any say in this except there. So why are we even listening to this?
So if, if it wasn't a public way and our. So if if it wasn't a public way and already accepted by the council. And it was still technically under a subdivision approval, then you would have some jurisdiction, right? But because the council's already accepted the road, it's a public way. It's typically like any other house lot on a public way, like if somebody were to just pull the building permit. The building commissioner and if there's conservation issues, they would be responsible for any of the construction issues. This is a little tricky, because it's like the last house in the subdivision and they're building it after the house, after the street's accepted. Um. I think because the developers are known are known co- commodities that they're willing to. You know, make corrective action to um. Be, you know, good guys, I don't, I think they're willing to work with you, I don't think that they have to by any means, is what I'm saying.
So we're essentially here to mediate more or less?
Um. Yeah, yeah, I guess, or you could just say, you know what, the conservation commission can handle it and that's where it should stand.
I would hope that the that the developer would play nice and be a good neighbor and everything else.
Right, he is, but he is.
And you're just, we're we're basically just gonna probably recommend that you take this to the conservation commission and. And I would, I would go on with, you know, rely on Mr. Tanzi's best. Solution that he would feel to to rectify the the issue.
If. Well, the first thing that comes to mind is uh maybe there is uh. The council was too quick to accept this as a as a road, and then that probably we should consider that in the future. Um. And and as you're 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 saying, Jen, I we don't have uh real say here, but but again, I think the the important thing, it's already been spoken of, is that. The developer and the homeowner should work this out themselves with the help from Mr. Tanzi. I mean, there there's there's no reason why this can't be solved uh by the people working together here. And then that hopefully doesn't even have to go to conservation.
Right, so I think that's, I think that's a plan, I mean, I think um, I'm not sure Greg, if you were looking for some more support from the board. Or anything to help with this situation, it's just unfortunately, they don't have a lot of teeth here. Um, you know, I I don't have any sign off capabilities a- at this point.
Yeah, the only thing we can we can hear Mr. Silva as well, then give some kind of recommendation to the conservation commission, that that might be the best we can do in this, I guess. It's kind of a weird.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, Mr. Silva wants to say anything, but we're, I'm happy to listen to him and hear his two cents, but.
I mean, in the end, Mr. Tanzi can turn around and say, you need to go to conservation or bring it up to conservation, let them and let them put their foot down on this part of this issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I've already shared it with the environmental planner, um, and I know that um he's been copied on a lot of stuff, so. I'm sure he'll bring it up to the conservation commission, they do have to sign off on their certificate of compliance. I think that that's, you know, the the appropriate place for it. Um. I've spoken with the developer a couple of times today and I, he is willing to, you know, do take corrective action to to make it work for everybody. Um, you know, it's just a matter of what is that and how long is it, because some of the corrective action may take a little bit longer. Um, because you'll need to wait for, you know, grass to grow and things to stabilize and things like that, so. You know, it's not gonna happen in the next couple of weeks, it might not happen till the spring.
Yeah, like obviously regрадed a lot is a lot different than knocking out part of the berm, so, yeah, it's gonna be the contention if any.
Yeah, I would, I would just say, I I think that's a good plan, I think it should be worked out, there's no need to, you know, uh, call the police or anything. Um, but I I I think it's important that the planning board be updated in the future, so what's what's happening with this, just for our own knowledge. It shouldn't happen.
And I mean, the plant, the the lot wasn't graded according to the way the plan. Um, was laid out.
And that is correct, it was not graded per the approved plan.
Now, can that be done? Can it be graded according to the plan or?
Uh, yes, it it could be, it it could be, um, if if um. The authorities um deem that that's. The only solution or that's the only solution that they want to accept. And it looks like it's gonna be the conservation commission making that decision right now. Because um that that permit is still open and it it is under CONCOM's jurisdiction, because. It's dealing with um, you know, yeah, well, conveying stormwater. Um, uh, to to the resource area, the fact that um. Uh, the 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 area in in question could most likely qualify as an um. Isolated land subject to flooding, which is the conservation. Um, resource area that would fall squarely under their authority. Um, so I mean, if um, eh, you know, I would be happy to. Uh, review whatever solution. Um. The applicant comes up with or any solution that the um commission wants to see done. Uh, but it sounds like the next step here would be to. You know, you know, contact um. Uh, the the conservation agent. And, you know, schedule it before the commission to to see what they wanna, you know, to explore the solutions and see what they wanna go with.
Yeah, that sounds, I don't think there's just any relief we can provide in this situation, so that's uh pretty much your best bet.
Yeah, uh, just one last thing, was there any issue with the ASB?
Well, they haven't submitted a a pro- a land, uh, a lot as though, I don't believe, right, Greg?
No, I have not seen any.
Well, that 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 brings it back to really my original point, how could the town, how could the council approve this? If we don't even have an ASB for the.
So we have an ASB for the road, but this is the lot. So they they approve it based on the road construction, not each individual lot.
Right, and they and they and they used the lot as a fill instead of leaving it as, leaving it as it was supposed to be existing graded.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, you know, so the the unfortunate part is. It it's already been done and it's kind of like Jen said, it's it's kind of out of our hands, I mean, I wanna listen, but, uh, you know, we do have no teeth here. To say you you guys need to do this, I mean, I think I think you should work with the developer to get it done and rectify it.
You want to hear from Mr. Silva, he indicated he can speak to the issue if you wanna hear from him.
Yeah, I'm gonna be happy to hear about too, nobody, I don't think anybody's gonna object to that.
All right, Larry, I muted you.
Good evening, Larry Silva, Silva Engineering Associates. Um, uh, the first I had heard of this was uh about, I guess it was when uh. The letter came from town engineer, from Greg. Uh, so I went out to the site and I met with uh Tony Shavs, who had done the workout on Lot One. Uh, we subsequently, I subsequently talked to Mr. Foley, who is the uh abutting uh property owner. And uh I asked about what, you know, what had been experienced there and. I asked him about permission to be able to do survey on the edge of his property. Uh, he declined at that point to give me approval to actually survey onto his property. So I wasn't able to get really great shots on his property, but we did survey uh the area. Uh, of the of the swell or the base of that slope. And um, so basically, the the history was just quickly that uh in September, there was a a very large storm. As you remember, right after, I think it was September second or whatever, around Labor Day. There was that significant storm, and at that time, Lot One was still being graded. It really hadn't even gotten to the point of being a finished uh graded lot. And so as a result, there was um a lot of water that did find its way into Mr. Foley's uh property right there. In uh response to that, um, and you can see there's a receipt there attached uh to my letter. Uh, that uh Sha- Shaws was uh asked to go out there and to. Address that area in order to rectify um the problem. And and as such, he went out there and he um, he graded, he graded the area and he was trying to protect. The Foley property by putting a berm on the Foley side. To prevent any water to come from Lot One and find its way into Foley's property. But by doing that, he actually put the grade higher than the existing elevation of Foley's property. And so when Foley's property sees water, it doesn't find its way into that common area. So the immediate solution right now is to remove the section of berm in the area that I showed on that sketch. In order to, because that's the lowest spot on on the on the full, on the fully property. Yeah, he will still have some puddling that occurs on his own property, only because. The lowest grades that are on his property are not right at the property line, they're a little bit inside of his property. But as soon as that grade is reached, uh, which is the common line there, then then the water will be able to find its way. Into this swell area. Um, the swell, when you ask the question about what is the ASB show, the ASB shows that. Um, the swell is in 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 general, it generally it's it's what was on the plan. However, there's a couple of differences, one was that um it doesn't follow the exact same pathway. But it is within the drainage easement that was going out to the back, uh, because there was a a section where they wanted to avoid. Taking down some trees that were next to Mr. Foley's, so they kind of pushed that swell area a little bit. Towards Lot One, but still within the drainage easement, so I don't see that as a big issue. Um, the bigger issue came, I think, with the replication area that was done. Uh, to re uh be for the uh to replace the wetland area that was filled in for the construction of the roadway. That replication area that was done uh when Dyer was doing the construction work uh for the subdivision. Um, was actually um planted a little bit too high. So it actually ends up, instead of it being, um, I think it was supposed to be eighty five, five, it ends up being eighty six, five. So what it did was it took a situation where there was kind of a a minimal slope. That was gonna be along that swell coming up to this point where I'm saying that the berm would be taken out and it and it made it flatter. So in the, so the uh, so once this berm is out of here. Um, there's not gonna be a lot of elevation change to allow for the water to leave his property, but that will happen. And then uh we'll look at whether or not there's other kinds of things that could be done to maybe improve the. Uh, the swell condition as it goes out to the back to the replication area. Uh, however, um, as I stated in my letter, it's really a conservation issue at this point. Uh, I think that from a neighbor's point of view, as Ray you had indicated, I I I think that uh. Um, that part of it will be taken care of, and by taking this berm section out right away. Uh, they won't be impeding water from leaving Mr. Foley's. Now, after that's done, we just gotta make sure before we get to the point of requesting a a certificate of compliance. That um, you know, that we we do whatever has to be done along here to make sure that it functions the way it was supposed to function. So I I think that uh it it's adequately regulated by the conservation commission. I really don't think that there really is a role for the planning board at this point. Uh, but obviously, because it was a a new subdivision, um, that's why it was presented to you.
You know, if I may again, um. I agree, we we don't have a role here, but based on what you just said, Larry, it sounded like. Everybody's doing things piecemeal in terms of trying to correct this, it sounds like you need a plan in conjunction with Mr. Tanzi. And then do it, instead of doing something here and then doing something there, if that didn't work, so we'll try this. I think a plan uh based on what conservation thinks and and engineering thinks is the way to go, and then then just do it.
Uh, I I don't disagree with that, um, I would just say that um. This immediate action that I'm asking for the contractor to do to take that section of berm out. Is to take away the immediate concern that that Mr. Foley has. Um, the the um, beyond that. Um, I I would say that, yeah, that has to be worked out, the the site is still being graded off. I mean, this is not even, uh, it's not even graded off up to the house at this point. So there, so there are a couple of other uh. Options or actually um actions that may be taken. Uh, depending on what happens uh as this thing gets uh is matured and is allowed to um. Be finished as far as grading. But um, yeah, and I think that nothing is gonna happen in terms of getting approved by conservation, getting signed off. For a certificate of compliance until uh. Until the town engineer consults with them and says that he's he's comfortable with that happening. So, so yeah, so it's gonna be working with with the with the town engineer, uh, but I think right now, taking the. Uh, the emphasis away from having a uh an ongoing problem with water backing. Or or not being allowed to get off of uh Foley property, I think that's the, an immediate action needs to take place.
Yeah, provide a little immediate relief, we can address a larger problem, makes sense. Hi, well, thank you for the presentation, I don't, like I said, I don't think there's really a vote or anything we can do here, uh, anybody else has further questions?
Oh, good.
Yeah, I wish all parties involved luck then with uh sorting it out. If we ever come to a minimal solution.
Thank you, I I think, I don't think we need you anymore, Greg, so thank you for sticking it out through the long meeting.
Okay, well, I appreciate that and um Jennifer, just keep me updated as to where it stands with CONCOM and. I'll be happy to help.
All right, great, thank you.
Yeah, well.
Thanks for your time.
You're very welcome, thank you. Bye.
All right, so I think the only other thing we have on the agenda is minutes. And I just lost my agenda.
Believe that's correct.
You're my agenda's tired.
Looks like minutes for the ten six, ten twenty, eleven three, eleven seventeen and twelve one.
I'll make a motion to approve any of the minutes I read.
I think was all of those except for twelve one.
Yeah, I know, I haven't read twelve one.
I didn't read twelve one, right, okay.
Do we just wanna take the first four then, unless anybody else, anybody else have any other opinions on that, comments?
My comment.
All right, so I have a motion from Gene.
All right, so that's twelve, that ten six to eleven seventeen for. Okay.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mrs. Garino?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, uh, no board committee reports?
Who is twelve one? Uh, twelve one, and then you have uh twelve fifteen. And one five, and then tonight, so we have four more.
Okay.
Catch it up.
Okay. They are good nighttime reading.
We we really shouldn't have these, see, you know, the CE DC meetings when we have other stuff going on, we, it's just shouldn't be done.
And I don't know, it's possible to do it by themselves, but I don't disagree in theory, you know.
I'm happy to schedule them whenever you'd like.
Either that, or we should take them out of order and do that last and get rid of all this minutia in the beginning.
That's not a bad idea.
Just by, just by two cents.
I'm happy to do that.
Oh, this is Geller.
Okay, so, so, sorry.
I was saying, I have no report tonight, so.
Okay, no, no committee reports, all right, perfect, uh, I guess we'll take a, detain a motion to adjourn then.
Don't move.
I'll second.
All right, any uh discussions? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yeah.
Mrs. Garino?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
We're out of here.
All right.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Good night, Jennifer.
Good night.